Good evening, welcome to the December 11th, 2023, Meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. We're doing this as a hybrid meeting, so the first thing we'll do is have a roll call of the board members and staff that are at.
All right, so Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hessener.
I'm here.
I am also present, Ms. Presnahan.
Here.
And on Zoom, Mr. Vecchittraman.
Present.
And Mr. Davidson.
Present.
And staff present in the room, Ms. Coughlin, the Town Planner.
Here.
And Natalia Alward.
Present.
Okay, everyone is here and can hear and be heard. First item on the agenda is public input. This is where people can speak to us about something within our domain that is not on the agenda tonight otherwise. Is there someone who wants to talk to us? I thought there was going to be.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Stacy Bloom and we have Jenny Cosgrove from DYS that will be speaking, addressing the board this evening, following up on a written submission for the board's review. If you, if Stacy and Jenny, you know, I'll just give a brief overview of the situation and then I will hand it over to you to explain in more detail what you're seeing on the site. Excuse me, so Stacy approached myself and the zoning enforcement officer slash building commissioner with an issue with flooding on their site, which they believe might be related to the development that's going on Woodland Hill and Winslow Point. They have relayed issues specifically on the ropes course. We went out there, staff, myself, the DPW director, Graves Engineering, the project manager for both projects, Essick Petrie, amongst other folks, the water department was also out there separately, walked the site and took note of, took note of any, any outlying concerns or wasn't, when we visited the site, it was dry, but we know there has been some significant rain events that have been going on that are probably affecting stormwater and drainage issues. So we, I've briefed the appropriate staff that will need to go back out there again and do another site visit, and we're working on setting that up, but I just wanted to make sure that Stacy and Jenny were able to have the opportunity to address the board and talk through their concerns when they go through the appropriate channels and it's on the record. So with that, Stacy and Jenny, I'll turn it over to you, all righty? Thank you.
Thank you Fiona. Also joining me, it's strange, I've never addressed a planning board in this virtual setting, so please excuse my sort of novice at this, is Francisco Miguel, Franklin Francisco, Miguel Francisco, who is our Director of Capital Planning, he's also on this call. As I, as I, I want to also thank Fiona and Bob Berger from the Building Department, they have been incredibly helpful and responsive to both Jenny and myself during this time. So we are at 32 Institute Road, we have a training academy, it's the Department of Youth Services Training Academy for in its entire state. There's also a DYS program on that site as well as a Department of Mental Health Office Building as well. And beginning with the construction, we, the department and Jenny began to notice extreme runoff during rain events and it, the water, which seemed to be taking a new route, which it had never taken, it was coming directly down the driveway across the property and onto also our ropes course. We have a ropes challenge course on that property that we utilize for youth and staff, and it was an extreme exacerbation of the water. I do know we've had an exceptional amount of rain, but in 20 years where, that we've been on this site, even in years where we've had significant rain, we've never, ever had any kind of problem like this. The water at times has been so great that the ground has actually undulated and has been completely saturated. The wood chips on our ropes cords have completely washed away. We had to have an inspection of our ropes course to ensure the structural integrity of the pilings, there has been so much water on that site. Additionally, the, there's such a volume of water when it rains coming down our driveway, it has overburdened our own drainage system and the outlet, which is in our lower course, is now, it's such a volume of water there, we're going to have to do actually our own construction to try to reroute some of that drainage. And we're in process of working with DCAM, who manages our building location, to talk to them about that. We are incredibly concerned with this change in, in, in conditions on our site. We've had someone fall because of the wet, the, the grounds are, have been wet, so wet at times, it's caused pitting, and we've had someone fall who was out on our property. And we just wanted to bring that to the planning board. I would also say that we've had some issues as well with some road closures, some near misses with construction equipment out in front of our property, the road had been opened, forcing our staff to drive down the shoulder, sort of on the, quite frankly, kind of through the woods to get out of the property. We've had construction equipment parked in our driveway, but our main issue here is really the water. We're concerned that the drainage plans that Pulte filed were not and are not sufficient to take care of the, the, the increase in impervious surface that's going to be across the street. At one point, a few weeks ago, they actually dug a ditch on their side of the road to catch the runoff, but that ditch has now been replaced with a sidewalk. So we just wanted to raise that. We are afraid that if there's any significant snow this winter, that the melting in the spring could be catastrophic on our site. So Fiona's been wonderful and very responsive, and so I just wanted to bring that to the planning board. We are looking forward to working with Fiona and hopefully the planning board to help address these concerns.
I mean, anything else from your side before we do anything here?
I don't think so. Jenny, did you wanna, did you have anything to add?
No, Stacy, I think you covered it kind of with an overview of what's been going on, so I have nothing to add.
Okay. First of all, when I saw the email, I was confused. 33 Institute on the Town GIS is on the west side of Institute, doesn't have anything on it.
Yep, I apologize for the typo, it is 38 Institute.
Well, when I look on the GIS, it's, it's 40.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. So in any case, pretty clear where.
What do you mean?
What we're talking about. I, I went out there and looked and I couldn't see where there was going to be a significant path to, to produce a lot, you know, an unusual amount of runoff. But I suppose that our engineer is the one, probably the highway department and our consulting engineer are the ones who would have a better idea than I do about what's actually going on. It did bring to mind for me that we had an extraordinary rain period here a while back that caused flooding of the new library, and I guess in a way that an architect never thought he needed to protect the building from. So that was very unusual, I think it was very isolated rain here, and I was thinking, no, that could, that could be part of something that was happening to you, but I guess that, I don't know how we identify what, if anything, can, should, or be done.
Yeah, so if I may, Mr. Chair, the permit is conditioned to adjust in the event that these types of things happen, which, you know, will require Pulte to come back before the board and rework the stormwater and drainage systems. But, you know, as, as Stacy mentioned and myself, I think that the, the next step after addressing the board will be to go out there and pinpoint problem areas and like really all of us walk the site, get an in-depth understanding. Obviously today, the issues are probably exacerbated as well with all the rain we had this morning. I would like to try and, you know, it's not ideal for, for staff, but I think it would be beneficial for us to go out there twice, particularly when it's after a rain event or maybe even during a rain event so that we can get an understanding. But nevertheless, the, the permit is conditioned accordingly, and if Pulte needs to make changes, then, you know, they've made it clear that they will do so. Obviously, we'll need a formal report from Graves Engineering, who's the primary, you know, consulting firm that oversaw the initial erosion control and drainage plans and provided comment. And yeah, I think that that's, we, we go from there, but I think just procedurally, this was the best way to do it. And if the issue is reoccurring, as Stacy mentioned, then yeah, it's, it's time to elevate the concern to the board, make the board aware, and then staff will do what we need to.
Yeah, the, the design, the erosion control and stormwater management design is supposed to produce no increase in the rate of runoff during and post-development. So if that in fact is happening and clearly from, you know, the DYS point of view, there, there is runoff that they were, had not seen prior to, so that, that would mean that either the erosion and sedimentation control that's installed in the field, the stormwater management that's currently installed in the field is not working as it should, or it is not, or the design is deficient. And I'm not qualified, I mean, I know what's supposed to happen, I would rely on town staff and particular on Graves Engineering, who is, was responsible for reviewing, reviewing the design, and they, they, they should be in a position to see whether, whether the as built, as it is currently built in the field is as per with the design, and if the design is or is not, does, does or does not turn out to be capable of managing as it should.
Right.
So I look, I look forward to hearing, hearing the, their perspective on that and any remedial actions being taken that need to be taken.
Yeah, and, and to, to your point, Dave, we're trying to expedite this obvious, as fast as possible, obviously, because with the snow coming, it's going to be a, a problem. So yeah, we are going to try and have an update as soon as possible, definitely by the next meeting, but hopefully much sooner than that. So, so yeah. And just Stacy, I know that you spoke to the police department regarding.
I did.
Yep, did you, did they provide any additional feedback that you wanted to share? Because I believe the chief did.
Yes, absolutely. The police were incredibly responsive. So we had found out last week, I think it was, was it last Wednesday, we saw posted on the town website that the road, Institute Road was going to be closed in both directions, and we have, you know, 60 people coming to that, we had 60 people coming to that site last week. I did, the police chief didn't know anything about it, and I did speak with Essick from Pulte, he was incredibly responsive, and it turned out the road was not going to be closed that day, and in fact, there would be a detail at that site to assist while they were doing construction work, which we were very, very pleased because there have been instances, at least two during the last six months, where our staff had arrived to find the road closed without a detail and had to drive, as I said, down the shoulder to, to find the road open in front of our property and have to drive sort of through the woods to access the property. So it did work out last week, Essick was very accommodating, and in fact, there was a detail, and I did express to him, we would love it if they had a detail there anytime they were going to be working on that road to avoid some of the problems that we've encountered during the last six months with, when there is, has been no deal, no detail and the road was closed.
You know, it struck me that something really wasn't handled right, or something isn't being handled right. First of all, I think that notice, I've forgotten who, what part of the town or who posted that Facebook page, but we should chase that person down and find out what they thought they were doing without proper information. But then it, it sounds like the developer is simply deciding when he wants to close the road, and we're going to put a stop to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I was told by the police chief that someone had called into the police station and spoke to the person managing social media, because he didn't know anything about it, and, but it has been our experience that the developer has not let us know when they were going to close the road at all. We've arrived at work to find the road closed, so that any assistance you could give us, we would be very appreciative, at least some notice. As I said, we have a lot of people coming to that location who are coming from other parts of the state, who, who aren't familiar, and they, they arrive without a detour sign and the road is closed, and they just quite frankly don't know what to do.
Right, well, that's not going to happen, one way or another, that's not going to happen. We can take action against the developer if necessary. I want it very clear to him that he's not going to do that, that he is going to follow through completely on what he has to do, request the ability to close the road from the chief.
Yep. One of the, one of the past closings struck me, and I remember reaching out to, you know, staff at the time that the road was closed, because our initial approvals and conditions were, were that no access on Institute Road would be blocked at all, people would have to detour through the project with their completed, with their paved roads to allow access. And it was my understanding, at least at that point, that it was the chief's determination that they, the department would prefer not to do that and why the road closed.
Yep.
And, but if the chief is unaware, I don't know why the road would be closed, and we definitely should make that.
Well, because someone took barriers out there and put up a sign that said closed.
Yeah, my, my point is, I'm not happy if the chief is not being the one to say the road should be closed.
Right. Well, the chief, as far as I'm concerned, the chief will be the person who says, unless it's the highway department, I don't know here in the daytime how you do it, but there's got to be somebody who's in charge, and the developers have got to go through the right way of doing it. We can take some action if we need to against the process, if, if they can't seem to get that right.
Yeah, I mean.
Not that you can't tell that I'm unhappy about this.
I appreciate that, sir. We have a program there that needs 24 seven access, you know, for emergency purposes as well, so I very much appreciate your assistance.
That, that's your front door, I mean, that, that's your door.
Yeah.
There, there, there's the former remains of another road at the, at the bottom end that goes out to Route 30, but it's blocked off and I suspect that it's totally impassable. And the Town GIS calls that Institute Road too. It's, it's another, it was a road, I'm, I'm sure, in, in the, in the institute, in, in the hospital. But I, I was wondering, when you said through the woods, whether you would.
Yeah, no, it was like down the shoulder, kind of around up the, literally on the grass on the side of the road, down on the side of the trees there on Institute Road, it was, Jenny had to traverse that to get to the, to the building and was, it was quite an adventure for her, I know.
Except that's the way the road Dave and I live on works all the time. It's a country road.
Yes.
And Institute Road is moving up from, from quite that status, and maybe our road will some year or two. But, you know, the country roads are designed so they only pave out as far as they need to, but there's some more out beyond the edges. Anyway, anybody have any, anything else to?
So, Mr. Chair, yeah, so, so we'll, we'll get on this, and just something else to note, that the developer did recently request a bond release for the Offsite Improvements Institute Road, so we're going to need to make sure this is squared away, obviously, before that. So just another thing to, to bear in mind.
Now, on the other, on the other side, I went out and looked, and water usually doesn't flow uphill, and I just saw it uphill from the development to the road. So I don't know, you know, we're going to have to hear from the engineers where this water is coming from, is, is more water, or is there a higher rate of flow? And is there more water in total than there was flowing across, somehow getting across the road? Okay?
Thank you, sir, very much appreciate your assistance.
Stacy, Jenny, and Franklin, just one other thing, if it's of interest to you, there is another project that's on the agenda for this evening, that is your neighbor, if you are interested in hanging around for that, that won't be until a little bit later, but it's 124 West Borough Road Site.
Yes, I will hang around for that, thank you, Franklin.
And I, I reviewed the stormwater and erosion control plans for that project, and they look like they're in pretty good shape, but I think it's probably best that, just given what's, what's going on, that you are privy to this hearing.
Yes.
All righty.
Definitely hang around, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I should have mentioned before, I'm not sure whether anybody is here for the continued hearing on 20 Indian Path, but at 7:30, we'll consider a request to continue that hearing without, without taking any input, so might at least save you a few minutes if, to know that if you happen to be waiting for it. Mill overlay, revisit this project last addressed in July, do we have enough time?
Mr. Chair.
Five minutes?
I would, I would recommend that we gloss over this, considering the time constraints, happy to take any, any quick feedback from the board, but this was something that was bumped to this agenda to revisit. We did work with CMR PC using some LPA hours to kind of rework this, they did some research for us, but, and Dave did as well, a lot of in-depth research, but I think that it's probably something that we can discuss.
Right, this is, this is not time critical.
Right, exactly, it is not time sensitive, and that also goes for discussion item B.
Well, the, the LPA hours and all the other opportunities up at CMR PC are hard, they keep telling, when I go to the committee meetings, tell everybody, get, get everybody, you know, to come check and do stuff, so.
Yeah.
There's, there's, there's an awful lot more money, grants and whatnot, out there than there used to be. You know, you're, I, when I started up there, there was, there was no sources of money to, to do that kind of thing. I saw something about money to, in certain circumstances, money to fund the design work that's required for tip projects, highway, federal, federal highway projects, normally the community has to fund that and get that done before they can really get, get going at Mass Highway. So there's a lot.
Yeah.
Let's see, we still have four minutes. Bills?
I move we approve the bills.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Vecchittraman?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
I vote aye, and Mr. Hessener?
I vote aye, motion carried unanimously. Minutes of previous meetings.
We do have one set of minutes.
A move that we, the board approved, the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of November 21st, with any additions or corrections that might be noted during discussion.
Second.
Movement second, any discussion, any comments, any corrections?
I have one, my only thought is the second to last paragraph in the main section where it mentions, Ms. Foley made a motion, I suggest we put in some way in there that it's the select board's motion and vote, because it doesn't really specify that at the moment.
Okay.
And that's all I can.
Uh, no more comment?
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
I vote aye, Mr. Vecchittraman?
Aye.
And Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
Mr. Hessener?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Is two minutes enough for staff report?
Yes, I will be brief. So the, we're going to talk about this a little bit more, but we did get a notification regarding Stillwater, the subdivision off of Wheeler Road, I won't get into it too much, but I did want to, to preface the board that we are working with council on the next steps for, in, in light of the bankruptcy notice that was filed. The majority of my time has been writing permits, site visits, focusing on the budget, it's budget season. We had a master plan working group meeting on December 4th that went really well, so we're working on, we're pretty much almost done with finalizing the vision statement, I would think, a couple of rework, reworking needs to be done, but we'll get there. I submitted the housing production plan, because I was waiting for the approved minutes, so I was able to do that. We have a mass downtown initiative grant discussion this Thursday, if any board members are, I know Dave is attending, actually, will we have enough time? Well, Dave, Dave can report back and I'll report back from that meeting for wayfinding and signage, technical assistance, so we're excited to get that started. And yeah, other than that, we have a, I have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting this week, where I'll get an update on 17 and 27 Upton Street as well as 25 Worcester Street, and we have a meeting this week with CMR PC for our open space and recreation parcel acquisition project, so we, I will loop back about that. Those are the, the major highlights, as I mentioned, it's been, I've been a little bit in the weeds with permits.
I, I miss whether you wanted to circle back later on at something?
Stillwater notice, the Stillwater notice, the bankruptcy notice.
Oh, well, we don't have to start the hearing at, you know, if you, if you only need a couple of minutes.
Um, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, it'll, that way I won't have to remember.
Okay, we can talk about it. So we can probably just go right to correspondence then, let me.
Yeah, I wondered what all that was.
Yeah, it's been, it's been interesting, so let me, can you see my screen? Yes, you can. Okay. So we received this notice from the developer of Stillwater, so essentially what we're, we're starting the process of reclaiming the bond with Town Council, DPW has been notified, Graves Engineering has been notified, Town Administrator has also been notified. There was a, we went out to the site in October and there was a punch list generated for road improvements that needs to be addressed, that we'll need to use the bond money to, to do, and we have about, we have 143,000 left in the bond, which covers us in instances like this, a 20% contingency is always kept to cover our bases in, in the event that these things happen. So the, we're working on that, the, I spoke to the developer myself as well, and the concern that I have at this moment is the road plowing. We're going to need to take steps, and by we, I mean me, take steps to contact the butters and let them know that, you know, once I hear back from council, what steps they're going to need to take to make sure that their road is plowed. I know DPW does in some instances plow, plow private roads, but my understanding is that it's, it's an exception, and if there's, if it's a hazard to public health and safety, so obviously they'll do it in that, in that instance, but yeah, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to reach out to folks and say that they're going to need to probably hire somebody, a contractor, to take care of that, that work. yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to reach out to folks and say that they're gonna need to probably hire somebody, a contractor, to, to take care of that, that work. Um, the good news is that the road is in pretty good condition. Before we got this notice, it was, I, other than the punch list of items, um, you know, it's, it's, it's in relatively good shape. I mean, it needs the final, the final touches before town meeting acceptance, but um you know, it's, it's not in, it's not in a terrible condition where we would be worried about people driving on it and, and being unsafe. Um, so, so yeah, so I'll, I'll have more information about this. Um, I don't know if the board has suggestions or how to deal with this, uh, based on experience in the past, um, but I'm open to to whatever you need me to do, I'll, I will do it. Um, I'm hoping that, you know, town council will be able to weigh in, but.
Yeah, we, we have had cases before. Some, some of them kind of difficult, but most of it's going back quite a ways. Our recent council would remember some of it. Um, I don't know, you know, that's kind of beyond us. Are, I, I don't remember how, how many of the laws are developed.
All of them.
All of them.
Yep.
Yeah, no, we released all of them.
Yep.
The last, the last couple we released.
Releasing them, yes, but uh.
Yes, are they developed?
They've been developed, yes. Okay.
Yeah, my understanding from reading the bankruptcy paperwork is our connection to this bankruptcy proceeding is limited to the disposition of any remaining ma- bond monies.
That's correct.
That is, when, at, at such, at such time as we release the bond, whenever that may be, the bond money will be goi- will be used to satisfy part of the bankruptcy proceeding unless the bankruptcy proceeding is all taken care of, then the bond money goes back to wherever else it might go. So, it's, it's really uh, to me, it, it doesn't seem like it requires any unusual or different action on our part. We're aware that when the bond is released, it may go, it may become part of the bankruptcy proceeding. But beyond that, our usual procedures for finalizing the road and, and releasing the bond whenever we decide to do so. Ultimately, I'm assuming this is gonna lead to a road acceptance?
Yes.
Somewhere down the line.
Somewhere down the line.
That, that whole process, my understanding is not affected at all by this, this, this bankruptcy proceeding. It's just that we are a party to it because we're holding a bond that might ultimately be, become part of the bankruptcy proceeding.
Yes, that's correct.
It's a natural bond.
Yes.
You know, there, what, three or four forms of security, it could be, but it's, it's an actual bond, so there's
Yeah.
There's money there somewhere.
There is, yeah, yeah, there's a good cushion there to get the road up to Snuff, um, which is good.
Someone needs to find out. My first question is, how much money is needed to get, get to acceptance?
Right.
And time, too, there's, there's a certain amount of time before the road is.
Yeah.
You know, road.
Another full.
Okay.
But this does not require us to accelerate the release of the bond?
Hmm, no, I, I, no, I mean, I'll get more information from council, because this is, this is new to me as well, and I'm not sure if they're if they have a concern in that regard, but I don't, I don't think, I, I don't think so.
Yeah, from, yeah, I read through that and all that legal paperwork and the only connection I could see is they have a claim on the bond whenever we get around to releasing it.
Right, right.
Okay, um, that covers the correspondence as well as staff report?
Yes, there's, uh.
Okay, so it's time.
It's time.
All right, uh, the first hearing uh, tonight is on a continuation for special permit twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, uh, Twenty Indian Path uh dish wireless, uh, and I believe that we have received.
We, I need to recuse myself for this one.
Yeah.
Um, I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to Monday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M. So, we're bumping this off to next year.
Yes.
Is there a second of the motion?
Second.
That was, that was um
Jane.
Well, do we know who that was? Jim, all right.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins votes aye. Mr. Hassinger?
Aye.
Mr. Venkataraman?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mr. Woodab stains. Motion carries.
So, now. Draft decision. Fifty-eight Folet Street. The hearing is still open.
Yes, yes. The hearing is still open. Um, so, I have, I will um uh, turn it over to the applicant shortly, but uh, the, I have drafted a decision, which I included some comments. I posted this on the project page um on Friday, so, you know, there's a couple of comments in there. Um, we'll need to discuss the, some of the exhibits that were submitted between the last hearing and this one, particularly exhibits forty through forty-three. Um, it will affect uh the drafting of the decisions and findings, uh, exhibits, et cetera, et cetera, um. We did receive a transcription from McCarty Reporting Services today, um, so that was added. Um, that was for the uh November thirteenth hearing. Um, we did receive an letter from our council Harrington and Heap in response to um concerns raised, um particularly regarding the prohibition of service concern that we were um we wanted more um information on, as well as the uh um twenty-one Folet site and the feasibility of that site. Um, the letter concluded that, you know, I'll just read it out, that there were two inquiries for the board to analyze in determining whether denial of a special permit application would effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless service. One, whether there is a significant gap in coverage within the applicant's network, and two, whether citing the proposed wireless facility at the property is the only feasible plan. Um, as mentioned above, the applicant bears the burden of proof on both. Um, these are facts, specific inquiries, and the board must determine whether the applicant has met its burden. Um, so, I know Mr. Jaimo's here this evening, um, I, we also have Dave Maxon on the, the call um to discuss this a little bit more, um. We, when I reached, I reached out uh to Conservation after the last hearing to get an understanding of the site limitations for twenty-one Folet Street in response to Mr. Jaimo's letter, which is exhibit thirty, uh, eight. And, you know, Lea, Lea, our conservation agent, um, basically said that it would be a complex site to permit from the perspective of the Conservation Commission, although not impossible, definitely challenging. Um, it would have to go through uh the disposition process through Article ninety-seven, um, as well as um getting specific uh permits for impact on uh wetlands, floodplain, et cetera. Um, so, that was just a short summary of Conservation's feedback. Um, so that, in addition to Harrington and Heap's letter, is what the town has received. Um, I I'm not a lawyer, and I'm definitely not a wireless um expert, but from my understanding of what, what's been submitted, I think that we'll really need to drill down this evening with the applicant, you know, af- get a full understanding of what we're dealing with at twenty-one Folet Street, as particularly the service and coverage issue in light of, in light of Harrington and Heap's letter. I mean, from, from and Dave Maxon will probably be able to speak to this in a more intelligent manner than, than I. But the coverage is substantial in Grafton specifically, but doesn't hit the coverage targets of m- many of the thoroughfares and the, and the areas that the applicant was originally targeting. Um, so, I'm, I'm not gonna drone on and on, um, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Jaimo now, but I think that probably the best thing to do would talk through, talk through the exhibits that were submitted, and then from there, we can probably go go through the decision.
Well, we have to come to a place where we close the hearing first.
Right.
And uh, I don't remember ever crossing this bridge, but um if the transcripts go in the record. The transcripts don't end till we close the hearing.
Yes.
So, I think we have to, when we close the hearing, I think we have to have a caveat to accept the transcript.
Right, a- and, and I, and, and Mr. Wood brought this up as well today to me, um, so I did reach out to our reporting service and they are working on getting that information um as fast as possible. Um, we, I, I relayed that, you know, we're we could potentially be closing, so.
Mr. Hassner brought up a slightly different point. I think exhibit forty-three, to my memory, is the you know, is one of the checks we're missing. We are still missing the last meeting we had.
Right.
And then, Mr. Hassner was talking about tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
So, I think we have to somehow, oh, we, I think we've done this before to close with a caveat, whatever caveat we, maybe you can tell me, because this must come up every time.
Yeah, I mean, the transcript is like the minutes of the meeting, right? It's just a record of what was said at the meeting, so you can accept those. I think you could even accept them after the hearing is closed, but you, you, you had this, you had this um stenographer here because you're trying to make sure that every word is recorded, which is, you know, a smart thing to do from your standpoint and our standpoint, so it should be all part of the record.
Yep.
Actually, I, I thought that it was because the law requires um
Well, there, there are plenty of towns that don't bother doing that, but I think, you know, having the word for word.
I thought, I thought the federal law, um, maybe not.
Ms. Awur does have her hand up.
Al, and Natalie?
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that um the stenographer Sean McCarty, the president, rather, um, stated that he would have the last meeting's minutes, oh, transcript, rather, by December fifteenth. Um, I do remember that a lot of times the very last one is not always included because it comes after the hearing is closed, just as a ask point.
So, I don't have an answer. Um, okay, so now um we were gonna discuss the points.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Sure, and was, was your point, Fiona, I should go through the letter that I wrote? Is that the?
I think that if we could just go, I think actually we'll probably, the most effective use of time is to discuss Harrington and Heap's letter. Um, because they res- they responded formally to yours, so I'll share that
Yep.
on the screen, and then, um, yeah, we can talk through um some of the points there. Uh, and Dave Maxon will, will probably chime in um with his thoughts as well, um, because I know he's not a lawyer either, but um, but yeah, ultimately, I think wh- what we're dealing with is that we still need to get an understanding of, of what, of the, if a twenty-one Folet is truly not an option, because from an environmental perspective, it seems like it's, it's still able to permit the site and move forward with it. Um, and there is a history there. I know it's town-owned land, there was an RFP issued um, back in twenty seventeen, issued again in twenty eighteen, and then there was a formal letter submitted by Verizon to the town explaining at the time that coverage was insufficient um at that site. Um, so, I think, you know, we'll just need to get final, like, have a final discussion about that, um, so the board can, can get a full understanding that it's if it is completely um out of the question. Um, and from a s- service perspective and coverage perspective, if, um, if, if it's truly inadequate. Um, so I think we'll probably start there, and then, yeah, I mean, because of both, honestly, that's most of the the issue, that's pretty much encapsulates all of the issues that Harrington and Heap wrote about, um. So, I'll just, yeah, sorry, this might be a long-winded, bad way of explaining what's going on in here.
That's okay, and, and um, I don't, I don't have a printout of that letter, but just going, going from memory, I mean, one of the things they pointed out about that site was you have a solar field there, which the town uh procured, I think in twenty twelve or thereabouts. It's rented to a private company that runs it based on a lease with the town or the water department.
That's with the Water District.
Yeah, and, and you see how that solar field is shaped? It's a pretty weird shape. The reason they did that is because they put it on the only piece of land that is not encumbered by these environmental constraints that are on the property, so that, that land is outside of the floodplain and it's outside of the wetlands and it's outside of the, I think it's outside the setbacks or barely within the setbacks. There's not any other spot on that land where you can access and put a tower that doesn't have those constraints, and most sites have more than one constraint. They all have the requirement to go to both state agencies and local agencies, but there's something that wouldn't be even grantable, such as um setbacks from the twenty-five-foot no bill, which the town has imposed under their regulations. The, the wellhead protection zone, um, you've got something in your bylaw that mandates that we not be within, I think, twice the tower height plus four hundred feet of the wellhead protection zone. Um, there's no place on that site that you can meet the lotline setbacks, for example. Um, so, you know, sh- short of, short of doing a uh you know, an, an engineering study of a site that we don't have any rights to, um, you know, I don't think anything can be proved definitively, but everything on that GIS map that the town maintains tells me that this is gonna be a difficult or impossible site to find a, a suitable location, and that even if we did, it would be highly visible from Folet Street and from the area around there, because it's gonna have to go above the tree lines. And um, it's closer to many of those residential areas than the site we've selected is. It's not screened.
Yeah, I think I, I gathered from Attorney Heap's letter, Town Council's letter, that there really, there, there are two key points to be addressed. One is is there a gap in service? And the other is, is this the only, is the proposed location the only feasible alternative? That second point gets to uh the extent to which Verizon had explored all, you know, all practical, all alternatives that might have been practical and determined that this is the only feasible one. And I, and as I recall, on that point, you, this is probably in the previous iteration of this hearing where uh, you know, you went into some detail of all the different sites that you contemplated and ruled out for various reasons, among which were the owners of the land did not want a cell tower on the site or refused even to respond to your letter asking about it. You know, that's certainly an indication of infeasibility. I do wanna just sort of circle back for a moment to the gap in service question, and it's, you know, Attorney Heap basically said that, that the, that, that the board has to agree that Verizon has demonstrated a sufficient gap in service and has demonstrated that this, this, this site is the only feasible alternative. Does the board have any questions on the gap in service? Are, are we all comfortable that a gap in service has been demonstrated?
I, there's no question that there's some area that's not covered in Grafton. And as it so happens, this site also um provides coverage to other towns. Um, and if you, if you go high enough, you can build a tower that fills in gaps as far away as you want. Well, you know, a long ways away. Um, so the question is how you judge what area um you wanna look at as gap, how far out you wanna look for gaps. Um, and that's part of what bothers me, because if you're only filling the gap in Grafton, maybe you don't need to go as high, which is the problem.
Yeah, I mean, y- y- you do only because you're trying to reach north and, and that gap is in Grafton, and so the the height is dictated to a large extent by having to get over the ridge of that hill so it can reach areas um up on Milbury Street and in the neighborhoods, you know, just south of there. Um, we've had, we have a lot of evidence in the record about the coverage gap, a lot of maps. I do have Keith Valenti here, he can speak to that more. I think Mr. Maxon agreed that there was a, a gap in coverage. Um, I did hear today from Keith, and he can elaborate on this, that currently more than fifty percent of the coverage in Grafton comes from out of the town. So, you know, you've, you've been, you've been riding that uh good fortune for, for a while, but you've been able to get uh signals sneaking in from across from other towns, but as the capacity of the, these sites is constrained from other towns, but as the capacity of the, these sites is constrained, as the network grows, more people are using data and, and phones, the, you know, the network is not able to reach into Grafton, to reach these places that this site would fill. And so that's the reason that, you know, and we discussed this from the very beginning, that's the reason why this site is needed. It's needed to fill a hole where the signal doesn't reach, and it's also needed to offload capacity that uh is providing inferior service to Grafton from sites in Sutton and in Millbury.
Yeah, and if you look at, you know, in the RF report, if you look at the existing coverage map as well, there are significant gap areas adjacent to Grafton that this site also fills in.
It does.
But how much of that do, do we have to consider in our decision, is my point?
On, on the gap in coverage, I think from my perception on the coverage maps that were shown for different tower heights, the, the target areas that are in Grafton are not well-covered by a lower tar- tower height and are, you know, this, this tower height does cover other towns, but the gaps in Grafton are covered by this height. And the alternative site would be higher to just cover the in Grafton locations, that, that's the.
Put it, yeah, put it this way, there, there is a significant gap in coverage, as showed on the map. The, uh, a good portion of the southwest corner of Grafton is in that gap area. And as it happens, adjacent town, the gap extends to adjacent towns, but even if you look at Grafton, from the perspective of, is there a gap in coverage, I think the answer is pretty clearly yes. Assuming you accept the definition of the gap in coverage as being signal strength less than ninety-five, less than negative ninety-five dBm. Ninety-five or ninety-one? Ninety-five. I thought I saw, I thought I remembered ninety-one, it was if I made a difference to anybody. Anybody who, anybody who isn't an engineer.
Right, one, one could argue whether that's the correct definition of a gap in coverage.
And then.
But that's, that would, my understanding, that is the current industry standard.
Yeah, we can talk to Keith about that.
You know, I'm thinking, way, way back when, Can You Hear Me Now was the, the, the service gap, but that's no longer true.
Right, uh, good evening, Keith Valenti of C-Square Systems, um, so the question about the threshold to use, that's Verizon's uh standard for an area such as Grafton. Um, different carriers have different link budgets, but they're all generally in that, in that, you know, range, plus or minus a couple dB. But that's what Verizon uses for, for such an area like this.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you might, you know, back in the day, you probably would have been thinking more in terms of dropped calls. But to, today, people are using a cell network, well, maybe some people still make calls on it, but it's, it's, it's really the data performance and the day, the, 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 they, uh, the data bandwidth, it's more, more of the uh useful indicator of performance on the network nowadays.
Right, and, and I think in my, in the, the letter submitted on November twentieth, you know, we, we do comment that the minus ninety-five dBm doesn't guarantee service, it doesn't, anything lower than that doesn't guarantee that you're not gonna have service, it's, it's based on a number of factors, um, based on, you know, from Verizon's um operation of a nationwide network and their experience and knowing what, what they need to, to, to get that level of service that their customers uh expect.
Yeah, it's, it's got a little to do with whether the person looking for service is indoors.
Sure.
Or in a vehicle, or, you know, that kind of thing.
Or in a concrete bunker.
Well, how many, how deep?
There, there are limits to how, how, where a signal, signal can penetrate.
Sure.
But, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, the, the signal, the signal level roughly as, as mapped here is, is the uh today's generally accepted method of your, measuring signal, signal strength gaps. I just wish that we had been able to look at a, a better analysis of the alternative site ourselves, and, and for example, notice about the solar field, uh, and, you know, see all that, but I'm weary.
If I may say one thing about the alternative site that I noticed in our, you know, Harrington and Heap's letter that struck me as relevant and important, from the last paragraph of their section two, they wrote, "In order for the alternative site to be feasible, there will need to be some evidence that it will, will be made available by the town for lease and use by the applicant or access, accessible respondent to a newly issued RFP." And this board has not seen any evidence that, to that respect.
But has the town been asked? Who, from? Who has to do what?
So, I can answer that, Mr., so the, when the RFP was issued and issued again, there was, I spoke to the town administrator, and this is the previous town administrator, but the current town administrator said that there was no respondents, so basically the RFP was withdrawn, that doesn't mean that there couldn't be another RFP issued.
The fact that the town put out RFPs would be reasonable. You'd really have to ask the town whether, you know, there's reason to think that the town would do it again, they'd done it before.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I, you know, you can't conclude that it would not be available.
My takeaway is, based on what I read from our attorney's letter, without that evidence, it can't be considered an alternative site, so, you know. I, I could imagine the town may be willing to do that, but I don't know, we don't have any evidence to that respect.
You know, and maybe we should, need to develop that evidence.
But, yeah, that, I still have other concerns about the, you know, the site being feasible as well, but that was the one piece I noticed in there that was, you know, very sticking to me.
Okay. What else?
So, uh, well, Dave Maxson, did you wanna comment on anything that was discussed thus far? Any particular points in Harrington and Heap's letter that um struck, took your eye?
Uh, thanks, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good, thank you, uh, David Maxson with Isotrop, uh, working for the board on this matter. Um, yeah, I think Chris Heap did a nice job as, as far as you might expect an attorney to go in this, with this kind of a question, giving you some real details, uh, and, and how to look at it. Um, and uh, with respect to point one, whether there's a significant gap in coverage, uh, since a significant gap is something that a court decides, not an engineer, I, I avoid saying that, yes, there is a gap, but I said probably everything up to that in, in my uh evaluation of the applicant's uh data. So um, I think the focus is on whether the site in the proposed wireless facility at this, the property is the only feasible plan. And I think that's one of the distinctions that we're seeing here is, is uh, Chris Heap pointed out that, that, the, the, the way it's worded is, is feasible plan, we tend to talk about alternatives, and then from there, we think of alternative sites, when in fact the alternatives are alternative feasible plans. Um, and I think, yeah, what, what we've been wrestling with is this whole in-town, out-to-out-of-town sort of thing. Uh, the alternative potentially feasible plan that we've been talking about is to get most of the needs in Grafton that are served by the proposed facility uh, served from something that's not up on a hill and not piercing a, uh, the view line to a ridge line. Um, in, at, for instance, at twenty-one Filet. And then, because the applicant indicates it has gap areas in uh, the two adjacent towns, that if, if the applicant were forced to do that in Grafton, uh, the applicant would still have an opportunity to pursue locations in either or both of those two towns to address the rest of its gap. Uh, so, yes, it's multiple towers, but in fact, that's something that Chris Heap mentions, is that the alternative feasible plan does not necessarily have to be uh, a one-for-one match for, uh, against the proposal. Now, that being said, um, the applicant has provided a very good detailed uh, map with lots of lines showing all the constraints on the property, and that makes it difficult. Um, it has been a number of years since the property was put out for RFP and uh, you're right, you don't have on the record right now whether uh, there is, would be an inclination to uh, issue another RFP if it were um, yeah, if it were requested to do so. As far as the location on the property, what I had in mind when I was first looking at this is the fact that right, pretty much at the center of the property, where the northeast uh edge of the solar arrays is located, is also where there are two um, water district buildings, and I assume at least one of them is a well. Um, and you can see the solar arrays are constructed with their foundations right up near the uh, the fence around the, the water uh facility. There is, I estimate, about fifteen thousand square feet of disturbed undeveloped land that's outside of the five-hundred-year flood, and uh, basically, it's the end of that driveway next to the uh, the water facility and the solar facility, where you could conceivably develop a, a tower site. And yes, it would need, as has been described here, all of those clearances that uh would be required. So there's a lot of ifs um between uh deciding to go with a site like this and actually being certain that it's feasible, that you'd be able to get all the permissions that are necessary. Um, so uh, I, in my mind, that's, that's the um uh, the one question about feasibility is, is with all of the information that you have about that property, do you have enough to say comfortably that it's, it's a feasible site from a development perspective? Um, and then secondarily, um, if, if this site were feasible uh at twenty-one Filet, is that enough of a feasible plan that would be in the alternative to the proposed facility, allowing for the fact that the applicant could pursue additional tower sites in uh Millbury and or Sutton in order to complete the filling of its gap? Less efficient, certainly, but uh, that would be the way, way to approach it. So um, uh, that's my, probably not terribly helpful thought in a nutshell.
Yeah, again, you know, you asked the question. Uh, we don't have the information, I don't have the information to, to judge. I don't have drawings and so on at that site that I can judge. And I'm not sure that uh, oh, this is a drawing I don't remember seeing before.
This is, was in uh Mr. Jaimo's letter, um, submitted on uh, November twenty-fourth, this was an attachment, um, when he, initially, when he was initially outlining the site constraints. Um, this is, this was um what Harrington Heap responded to, this letter.
Scroll down to the, to the drawing, somehow, again, it's awfully hard to deal with this, some, all of this at home on a little screen.
Yeah, that, that drawing doesn't seem like it's coming up with the full color that was submitted, I don't know why, it might just be. There's a lot of data in there.
I'll try, see if Zoom lets me. I need permission. All right, you should be able to now. It's going to let. It's going to work. There we go.
Clear as a bell. I have no idea.
Anything we wanna point out on this while I have it up?
This is David, if I just note, if you look at the center there, it says Zone One Wellhead Protection Area. Underneath that label are the two uh wellhead buildings with a fence around them, and below them to the, to the south are the solar arrays, and under the word area is a very large turnaround space at the end of the driveway. That is, as you can see, it's to the left of the blue line, which is the marker for the five-hundred-year flood. The point-two percent flood, um, which means it's outside of the flood zone, just as the, the two buildings and the solar array are. Uh, so if you can get a solar array approved in there, um, it, it's, it's arguable that you could get a cell tower approved in there too. And it would also be approximately a thousand feet from the nearest residences and the nearest streets. Um, but, yeah, and there is some woods, but uh, to the applicant's point, there is some open area along Filet Street, which might um not uh fully uh conceal the visibility of the tower from the street.
I, I'm not, I'm also not sure that those solar arrays were placed after the well went into use. I, I believe this, they were?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the water district, I think, had control.
It was a cement, it was a cement.
The, de- developing that well was quite a, quite a situation, quite a project. Um, difficulties with contamination and who knows what. Um, uh, anyway.
I would just add, um, this is Jesse Moreno, um, Pro Territorial Design Group, I would just add that the comment that because the solar array is within that, anything in that Zone One um, would be prohibited to build in that unless it, unless it has to do with the well or providing power to the well. So, just because the uh solar arrays in it doesn't mean necessarily that you could put a separate use of there, like a cell tower. Um, based on my experience, you can't put anything in that Zone One that doesn't have to do with the well. Now, in this particular sense, because the well uses a lot of power, I'm sure that that's how the uh solar array was able to be put in there.
That is my recollection.
Right, so normally, you couldn't put a cell tower in a Zone One. Uh, over twenty years, I've never heard or seen anybody do that, not in Massachusetts.
The first cell tower I ever dealt with was located about ninety feet from a wellhead of what Grafton Water District, it, it ended up not, not getting approved, but it was behind Stop and Shop, what's now Stop and Shop.
Based on what DEP says, if it's not a use related to the well, then it's not allowed, in fact.
That may be, oh, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, underground utilities, same thing, um, you couldn't put sewer, not that we have sewer water, but you couldn't put those in that, you know? It's basically restricted area, not to mention that the bylaw also has an additional setback to that, which is four hundred, I think the tower height plus four hundred feet, that's what that dashed yellow line is. So your own bylaw, as far as citing towers.
I was thinking it was twice the tower.
Twice the height, it's twice the height plus four.
Twice the height plus four hundred, okay. Um, so two hundred percent of the tower height plus four hundred.
Um, no, I don't think it was plus four hundred.
There is, yeah, there's a plus four hundred.
Plus four hundred.
I know.
From the wellhead, yeah.
So that's what's in there.
I don't know about the, the well.
One sixty-one times two, uh, plus four hundred is seven twenty-two, so that's what that big dash line is. So basically, without relief from that, um.
Yeah, that, that, that doesn't. Does, what does everybody wanna do? I think if, if the board agrees that the propos- the proposed project is the only feasible alternative, and really, that, that seems to hinge solely on a question of assessing the feasibility of twenty-one Filet. And, you know, if, if the, has, has the applicant de- adequately demonstrated that twenty-one Filet is infeasible, and we're left then with fifty-eight Filet as the only feasible alternative, combined with the gap in coverage. Uh, my understanding of Town Council's letters, if, if we find those, that the applicant has demonstrated those two.
demonstrated those two facts, then to deny the project would be denial would be prohibited.
On that basis.
Just on that basis, that it would be considered, A T N L would be considered, what is it, what is the last?
Prohibition of service.
Prohibition of service.
Jim or Prable, anything?
My, so I'm reading the letter again and again. The first part, the two op two inputs that they the council is asking, that that seems to be, the first part seems to be clear as far as information that I have in terms of identifying whether there is a significant gap in coverage of the applicant's network and what was proven. That part I get it. I'm not finding enough information to determine if either the applicant or outside of the applicant, we have exhausted all the other locations. Is this the only option that we have in town? That part I'm not clear, if we have enough information.
Yeah, I can respond to that if you if you would. I think Mr. Robbins recalled that that we we have gone through all those sites. It may have been initially with the first hearing. I have referenced that site alternatives analysis and things that are filed here. I also tried to file it today. And I think it is part of the record with this for this proceeding. It it looked at several sites, including some along Phallett Street and some on other streets in the area that were just not available, either as as Mr. Robbins said, either because the owners rejected their request or refused to respond. Twenty one is the only one that was raised beyond that by the town and an industrial site off of, do you remember what street that was from?
Well, there was, you did a you did an RF analysis at one eighty eight Providence Road.
Providence Road. And and that didn't that didn't work either.
Just from an RF perspective, that didn't come anywhere near covering the gap.
That's right.
In Grafton, much less anywhere else. Interestingly enough, there's something else being developed now at one eighty eight Providence Road, which we will be talking about later this evening.
Yes.
Or.
Neither here nor there for the cell service.
I hope it's this evening, not tomorrow morning. Jim, any thoughts?
Um, I mean, it's just, I'm, I I live in closer probably to that area, so I'm in that area all the time, I'm in the park. And, you know, anecdotally, I know, you know, I I'm in that playground that's over there, and there's really no service in there. And I think, you know, we were wrestling with this idea about in town, out of town as well. And I know a lot of Grafton residents go through, there's a lot of commercial in that area that Grafton residents benefit from. But yeah, so I I think both anecdotally and based on the RF maps, I think, you know, there 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 are substantial gaps in coverage in in that area. And then, to me, I think the biggest question is more on the the site feasibility, where, you know, I I'm, you know, I I think there might still be some, a couple details left on that, but I think we've kind of hashed out most of it, that 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 site is likely not feasible.
Should I be engaging in another converse? I mean, the board, the select board is ultimately the ones who would agree to to have an RFP reissued for the site. You know, if the board would like me to engage with the with the select board and get their thoughts about reinvigorating this, I I mean, I I'm happy to do that. I'm I'm wondering why there was so much time between, you know, there was there was attempts twice, and it seems like nothing came out of it. But I mean, it's definitely something that I can.
What, when was the last time?
Twenty eighteen.
It was still under Tim.
Yes.
I think maybe we could get that bit of information and look as well as we can at all we know about the 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 feasibility.
Yeah, I mean, in this case here, the the applicant has stated pretty firmly that they do they do not consider twenty one Phallett feasible. It's up to us, I suppose, to assess the credibility of that.
Yep.
For which this additional.
It's up to us to decide whether we think it's not feasible. And we hear that they say it's not feasible, but we have to decide.
Do we agree with that?
Yeah.
Do we accept that there are?
Right.
Right. That's 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 really, I think that's where we're stuck right now.
Yeah. And so one half of that is, would there be an RFP? Could there be an RFP if or?
If.
A request that the town issue an RFP? And then the rest of it is taking a good look at all those, all the colors on that map.
If I if I may, on that point alone, kind of where my head is right now is that even if the town did say they were going to issue an RFP, and even if one was issued, it does, you know, my comprehension and the other can can tell us, you know, concretely if my comprehension is accurate, that there'd be no intent on the applicant's part at this, you know, for their current understanding of twenty one Phallett to respond to an RFP trying to make an offer to do something because of their explanation of what feasibility is there.
But I don't think.
What I, so the question to me is, could I just assume the town might issue an R, you know, might issue an RFP to make that feasible on our, not not feasible, to make that an option, that I would then consider this to be, you know, feasible with or not? And that's, you know, I'm not sure I I'm not certain that that would sway me on my vote at this point.
Yeah, but the the point is, there's a couple of us.
Yes.
That that have the open question. If if the town won't, it sounds that it it's unwilling to offer the the property, then we can definitely decide that it's not a feasible site.
Yep.
If the town is willing, or, you know, let's say is willing, then we have to also look at the all the constraints on the site.
Right, so the the town's willingness to offer the site is one of the factors in a feasibility assessment.
Exactly.
The applicant has outlined a number of others.
Right.
And it it sounds like we we really need to review that in more depth, so that the board can come to a conclusion as to whether the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed site is the only feasible site, the only feasible plan.
Right.
For serving, fulfilling that signal gap.
Right.
And if that turns out to be the case, then probably everything else about this is a matter of completing the details in the in the decision.
Is this the only question in the decision?
This is pretty much, I mean, the a lot of the comments are basically, yeah, related to related to that and how they'll, the final consensus will affect.
Okay.
So it sounds like we got, it sounds like the board is looking for at least one additional piece of information.
Yep.
Namely, an expression of the town's willingness or lack thereof.
Mm hmm.
To offer the site to Verizon.
And two two minor kind of points, like, looked it up. Number one, where it's the select board that would issue the RFP, it seems like to me that it, the answer on whether the town would consider issuing a new RFP would be a vote by the select board.
Mm hmm.
And their next meeting is January ninth. And then, this, the other point is to say out loud is this is, you know, so if there's still an open hearing, there might be public that want to speak.
Probably would.
There might, there would likely be public that may want to speak tonight, since we are still open.
Public wants to speak tonight.
Public.
Yeah, yeah.
So I didn't mention it.
Once, once we get past these folks.
Certainly.
Then we'll see if anybody has new input for us.
Yeah, there are, there are any number of details, you know, just quickly reviewing the draft decision, there are a lot of little things that.
Little things.
I don't want, I don't think we need to worry about right now, because we're we're kind of at a point of there's a, there's a fundamental question here that we need to answer before we can bring this to completion.
Right, right. Most of the comments are minor in nature, there's the larger, the two larger ones are going to be contention on what the board ultimately decides once they get more information.
Yeah, both availability and a clearer understanding of the constraints, the site constraints, which we'll have to look at. Something more before I ask for him?
No, but I would just just say if you are keeping the record open to do that, then we would reserve the right to submit additional information also.
Oh, sure. No, I I think, I think, you know, we're continuing till, everything is open until the next meeting, for sure, which is, if we if we get, in order to get input from the select board, it can't be our first meeting in January, it has to be our second meeting in January. Because the select board probably wants to to vote on the question. And they won't be meeting until after our next, our, we're four weeks out on our next meeting, and they're four weeks out, I suppose, from tomorrow night, more or less.
Yeah, apparently.
So, so, okay?
Yeah, so what's the, what's the next date?
Well, not, um.
January.
Two, two weeks after.
January twenty second would be the.
Yep.
Or would it?
Yes. There's no holiday or anything.
Yeah, I was wondering whether whether that lined up with the January holiday, the January holiday is the fifteenth.
Okay.
And we just, we just approved our our twenty twenty four meeting schedule, last meeting, I think.
Yes.
How quickly we forget.
The, okay, that's, we figure the select board will meet on what day?
The ninth. Justin says the ninth.
Oh, I see.
That's what I, that's what they have posted on the website, is their next meeting is the ninth.
Ninth, so, yeah, the twenty second?
Yeah.
Is that what we said?
Yes.
Yep, yeah.
January twenty second. But before we get to that, listen to the public, listen to any inputs we might have.
Yeah, Keith, so.
Is there anyone else who wants, who has something new for us?
Adam Ray, forty two Phallett Street. Wasn't at the last meeting, I couldn't attend, but I saw a couple things. One was from Robinson Call.
I'm gonna grab, Mr. Ray, I'm just gonna grab that photo to hold it up so the people on Zoom will see it.
Okay. Dated November twenty fourth, a couple things stood out to me. The status of the property, Massachusetts law chapter has sixty one, has no bearing on the validity, goes into zoning authorities and not arbiters of private property disputes. And it goes into saying, respectfully, the planning board has no proper role in this proceeding. It's limited to evaluating the compliance of its bylaws. And it goes down to say, the proposed tower is sighted below the ridge line of forty two Phallett Street of Lazy Hill. It does not. Verizon's proposed cell tower of Lazy Hill will cause the permanent blighting of our scenic landscapes. The balloon test used by Verizon is to simulate impacts, the viewshed should not be taken into considerations. The tests were either done in bad weather, or the balloon was flown at the wrong height. They failed to demonstrate the unprecedented height and scale of this tower. At a ground site elevation, and you'll have to forgive me, the last letter I wrote, I was off a couple numbers, from their plan is four hundred and seventy eight feet. At a tower height of a potential one hundred and seventy five feet, this tower will be one hundred and three feet above the highest point of the hill's ridge top of five hundred and fifty feet. As you can see in the drawing, I drew the ridge line, and the, from their balloon test, of their first balloon test at one seventy, you can see the location with a marked X. Its negative impacts will only increase as you go down the ridge line by quite a bit. How much I don't know, because I only have the point of the top and their point as reference, but you can gather it. I also have two topo maps of Lazy Hill, and it just demonstrates what a ridge line is. And what I can gather is, it's about a half a mile of ridge line from these maps right here, which I can give you.
Thanks.
So basically, this right here, right now, is blue sky. You can see through these trees right here. These trees are my trees. I own those trees. So that's not on their property. So I'd be screening their property. Their property is over here. So basically, you're looking at, I would say, this tower, because they've said they need to get above the hill line at one twenty, one thirty, one forty, and they're at one fifty. They can add twenty feet to bring free, without asking your permission. That could bring it to a potential of one seventy five, which is a hundred and three feet above the top of the hill at its highest point.
If I may, can you confirm that that is in fact the case?
The application's for one fifty five.
You can go with twenty more feet without permission.
I said potentially.
Yeah.
Potential one seventy five.
Confirm that.
If you'd like to, you can take off twenty feet from the hundred and three to make it eighty three feet. But potentially, it could be a hundred and three feet. And it could be a little bit more, because they might change the rules next year, where that twenty foot gap actually is the start of the next can, but that's another story for another day. So I don't think there's adequate screening for a hundred and three feet of tower at the top of the hill with potentially, well, with four arrays of multiple six foot antenna. So we're talking about sites, and it's kind of strange that they're telling you that you can't break your bylaws and put it in a industrial site with two other industrial projects, but you can break your bylaws by putting it on a scenic ridge line that your bylaws clearly protect. So that's kind of strange. And then it says in this Robinson Call, once again, so they're wrong to say that the tower is sighted below the ridge line of Lazy Hill. It's a hundred and three feet above it. It also says, once again, in the next paragraph, it will not be visible along the ridge line of Lazy Hill. Well, it will be. Then they go into their little calculations. Then they go into twenty one Phallett Street has too many site constraints on it. Well, it's an industrial site, I'm sure they can figure it out. Then this, that, and the next thing. And then it says the satisfaction for special permit standards, and it goes through, by technical feasibility, it can't be located. It goes, it goes into some other stuff. It will not be visible. It's screened by woods. It's not screened by those woods, those are my woods, and you can see right through them right now, because it's a ridge line. So I just, I just think it's just a blatant violation of our bylaws. And I know you heard it from me a million times, and these are just some pictures of the first balloon tests.
Well, we we need, since you've presented this at the meeting, we should have it in the record, but to figure out how to get that in the record.
Uh, what?
That.
Oh, that? I have no idea. Oh, that? I have no idea. I was lucky to put that together.
Well, it's, it's, you know, if you want it in the record.
I mean, is it, is it to scale and, is it to scale and measured? I mean, it's just, I, I don't care if you put it in the record, but there's no foundation for this. It's not.
There's also no foundation for your balloon test. Uh, that's enough. That's enough. That's enough. There is, there is an argument for me when we talk about ridge lines and we talk about the antenna being at such and so. It's not where the base of the antenna is, what the elevation of the ground is. It's the elevation at the top of the tower. That is what I think the bylaw talks about because, uh, and, and so I think, I think sometimes we get some, some fuzziness about that one. Uh, in any case, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
We have a hand raised on Zoom.
Uh, on Zoom.
I'm sorry, just unmuted. Taze Barlar, sixty Phulet Street. I'll assume you can hear me unless I hear otherwise. I just wanted to call out that, uh, notwithstanding, uh, it's Harrington heaps. Two directives to the board regarding, uh, to the planning board regarding the coverage and, uh, an additional site. I would also ask that the board consider in detail, as I did the, the bylaws, uh, specifically under one, one spot, five spot, five. Uh, excuse me, um, the general compatibility with adjacent properties and other prop, uh, property in the district, as well as the protection of important historic, cultural, and scenic landscapes. So I've uploaded my full comments, but I just did want to, um, ca- call out and ask that the board also consider or reconsider, excuse me, aside from the two points of coverage and additional site locations, uh, the bylaws themselves, both the spirit and the letter, uh, and I appreciate your time. And thank you very much.
Yes, I, I may have said one dot five dot one last time, but it's one, it's, uh, one of the subsections in one dot five dot five that you just mentioned, which is one that I, I have concerns about getting, working with.
Uh, so do I. Thank you very much.
Okay, but so that's, that's clear. Is there anyone else either in internet land or here? Okay, more? Ask for continuation?
If that's the board's, uh, desire, we'll ask for continuation.
Seems, that seems like the direction we were heading.
Yeah, but you, you need to. You have the forms?
So that, given the scheduling that we've talked about a moment ago, that, you know, continuing till the twenty-second of January would seem to be appropriate.
Or, or maybe it's me.
I think it's just another people. I think it's just another people in here.
Well, it makes a difference, I guess, you know. I know where the controls are. I don't know whether they do anything. Sometimes they don't.
To confirm, are you requesting until the twenty-second?
Yes.
Did you make the motion?
I was about to move that the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to Monday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M.
Second.
Moved and seconded. In any discussion, hearing done.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hassaner.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll see you then. All right, moving on. Special permit twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Uh, six Grist Mill Road. A, um, application for an accessory apartment.
Pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven and one dot three dot three of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, commencing at seven thirty P M. in conference room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, to consider an application for a special permit and site plan approval request for an accessory apartment located at six Grist Mill Road, shown as Grafton Accessory Map ninety-seven Lot Eight. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. The applicant owners are Jose Paul and Rebecca Soco. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at W W W dot Grafton dash M A dot gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
Alrighty, so, um, I'll just do a brief overview and then, um, you can add whatever you'd like. Um, so the, um, planning department received, um, this application on November fourteenth. Um, the applicant is proposing to construct a one thousand one hundred square foot addition to their two thousand five hundred and twenty-three square foot home uh, for an accessory apartment that will include a bedroom, living area, screen porch, dining area, kitchen, office, two new baths, a pantry off of the kitchen, a closet off of the kitchen, a walk-in closet off of the bedroom, and another closet off of, um, one of the bathrooms. In addition to, um, to the accessory apartment, uh, no, I'm sorry, the accessory apartment will constitute roughly a forty-four percent increase in the existing home's footprint. Um, and there is also a, uh, garage that will constitute a fifty-eight percent increase. Um, that was just quick math that I did. The applicant, as I mentioned, is proposing a three hundred and seventy square foot single car garage, um, on the property with an entrance leading into the accessory apartment. The garage will be in addition to their existing two gar, two-car garage within the footprint of the main home. Um, there will be an internal double door between the kitchen and dining area of the main home and the dining area of the accessory apartment. Um, I spoke to the, uh, building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer who confirmed that the presence of the door between, um, of that door denotes that the accessory apartment is substantially contained within the existing building um, and therefore meets, uh, the definition of the bylaw. Um, in addition to the garage door and the door to the main home, there will be another, um, front entrance leading to the driveway. Um, the applicant is proposing this, um, to have, uh, their in-laws live with them, um, and allow them to be with their grandchildren full time. So in terms of the application materials went through, um, no problems. I did, uh, um, notice one thing and we did speak with the applicant about this, that there is a temporary, um, can, there's a temporary easement on the property. Uh, sorry, bear with me for one second. Um, temporary easement on the property and that will need to be ironed out bef, um, which we can probably deal with, um, through the permitting process. Uh, other than that, yeah, I had no, I had no issues with this as proposed. Uh, I'm just going through my memo to make sure that I covered everything. This is in the water supply protection overlay district, um, as well, and the provisions for that, um, don't appear to be an issue. Um, so with that, if I will turn it over to the applicant, um, if you have anything you want to add uh, to what I just said, and we'll go from there.
Uh, no, nothing to add. I think you had, uh, noted or highlighted a few items in your, um, to the board.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to underscore, um, there's a couple of minor, um, things that I noticed when I do my, um, review of all proposals. Um, just a couple of things on the site plan, but nothing, um, you know, topography at two-foot intervals, not, um, not provided, but I know we've requested, but nothing groundbreaking. Um, yeah, I would actually like to confirm the, um, impervious coverage on the site. I don't know if you have that.
Right, so, um, Land Planning, uh, did a plot plan in twenty twenty-one, uh, for a pool patio, pool house. Um, the previous impervious, uh, total impervious, uh, square footage then was nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five square feet. Um, they did another, uh, plot plan for the addition, um, and noted that the increase uh, total impervious, uh, area, uh, of the proposed, um, addition would be ten thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet. It is in the proposed impervious areas section of the plot plan, but they failed to update, uh, a different section. Um, and it's just a holdover from the, uh, from the previous plot plan. If I need to have them, uh, update it, then, um, yeah, I can submit a new plan. I can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful just because it's gonna.
Right, uh, but the ten thousand four hundred and ninety-four square feet of, uh, proposed impervious area is less than the ten thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet that is allowable.
Right.
Now, these are plot plans. Um, you know, there, uh, there were, there are items on here that are proposed, but may, or may or may not be done. Uh, it was recommended that we just keep them on there. We don't have to redo anything in the future. And if you wanted to, uh, utilize, uh, some of this, you know, some of these plans, uh, at that time.
Yes, there's a couple of, um, let me pull up the, uh, pull up the plans so that the board can see what you're talking about and what the applicant is talking about. So there's, um, so the area, the, there's a couple of areas that, um, indications on this plan, patio expansion, um, indicated with a P for proposed, the stairway here, um, the proposed, um, screen slash pool house. That's the, what the applicant is referring to, some additional, um, potential, um, modifications to the site that don't directly pertain to, to this application, but just so the board is aware that that is, that's what we're, we're talking about. The addition is here with the garage. Um, driveway access is here. This is the primary dwelling, as you can see. Um, the pool is obviously existing. Um, there's an existing shed on the site. Um, yeah.
The setback, there's a fifteen point eight foot setback from the one, one millstone drive. I suppose easement. Uh, that's, I, I'm not sure what setback would apply there.
You got it.
You see where I'm saying?
So the, the, the setback, uh, I think per the, the rules of the town is fifteen feet on the side of the property. Uh, the end of the, um, uh, the end of the addition or the outermost part of the addition is actually fifteen and fifteen feet and eight inches.
I see that, right. Uh, but I'm, I, what I, you know, in this zone, what is the setback for the side and blah, 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 being sure it's right. You are familiar with the way we tend to permit accessory apartments, um, strictly within basically a family connection. Uh, and, and, uh, should that change, it would recall, you know, if the property is sold or, or, or something, then that condition means you can, gotta come back and.
Whoever, whoever the new owner is would have to come back and reapply. If we, if we approve this and then you sell the house, you know, for, to be used as an accessory apartment, the new owner would have to reapply for the permit as well.
Okay.
Which would be in the permit.
Yeah, conditioned accordingly.
Okay, anybody, anybody on the board have questions?
No.
Oh, do we need, do we, well, maybe we can do this with a subject to getting the corrected numbers on the plan, the coverage plan.
Yeah.
Anybody, uh, any of our members out there?
Let's see, any Zoom?
Jim or Brebu?
I'm all set.
Anybody else out in the internet? Don't see any hands. Anybody in the room have any input on this? If not, is there anything more for the board?
Assuming that there is nothing further, I will move that the board close the public hearing and, uh, direct staff to draft a decision.
Do, do we need a caveat about with the corrected?
Do we?
Draft a decision based upon the discussion, which included that, I believe.
I'll second that and I'll just say the comment I'm thinking is that that could be addressed as a condition of approval.
Okay, yeah. Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion. Here ain't none.
Mr. Robbins?
Aye.
Mr. Veckatraman?
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hassaner.
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your time.
So, yeah, the next meeting will go over the decision, um, which should be pretty straightforward. So that's the eighth.
Right, and you want a revised plot plan by that time?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we're, um, the board voted to condition the permit, um, to, to, you'll, you'll have to do that before you get the building permit. Um, so you don't, you don't have to do it for this form.
It will be necessary, but if it doesn't happen before our next meeting, it's not gonna.
Got it, okay, sure.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so who's next?
Okay, next we move on to special permit twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Continuation of a hearing on one eighty-eight Providence Road. Let's see. We have a draft decision.
Yes.
And my recollection was that the one open item we had from the last hearing was the question of a thirty-foot driveway width. And we received, as I see it, correspondence from fire indicating twenty, the twenty-four feet as shown on the plan was acceptable.
Yes, that's correct. So I just pulled that up so the board can, can see that. That was entered into the exhibit. So, yep, no concerns there. Um, did, uh, speak to the transportation consultant who, um, had no additional concerns, so they are not here this evening. Um, so, yeah, I think that the, you know, the, the bulk of the discussion this evening will be going through the, the decision. The draft decision. Um, so, um, I don't know, um, Norm or, um, Mr. Knopik, if you want to speak to, to anything in particular, um, regarding the decision or if you want, want to just go down through, I mean, most of it is boilerplate, but.
Are we going to, well, deal, deal with the decision after we close the hearing or before we close?
If, if we have received all the information that we expect to receive, we could close the hearing.
Yes, I, yes.
And then deliberate on the decision.
After we look for input from the public.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, uh, for the record, Rob Knopik for the applicant. Um, and with me, uh, is, uh, Norm Hill of Land Planning and Jay McGill of the Applicant Broad Metal Realty LLC. And I, I think Mr. Robbins is correct. We, uh, back on the twenty-seventh of November, it seemed like we were, we were close to, uh, arriving at a closing of the public hearing, but for an issue that the board wanted resolved concerning the fire department's consent to the road layout as designed. And I, I believe you have that consent. And, um, so I think that one lingering item has been resolved. And I want to appreciate, uh, I want to acknowledge rather with appreciation the, uh, very complete and thorough decision that was drafted by the town planner. I did receive a copy of it today. Um, we all took a look at it, uh, but for a few minor clarifications, some questions for the applicant that I'm prepared to answer this evening if you'd like. Um, the decision, I think, is in good shape. Um, and more substantively, I can tell you that on behalf of the applicant, there's no objection to the conditions that are set forth in the decision. Uh, to which you might say, well, tough if there was objection, but I assume that it's better for you to know that there isn't objection than, than that there is. So I think we're in good shape to close the public hearing. Now, if it's your policy to, uh, strictly prohibit additional testimony or evidence or even answering questions from us prior to the close of the public hearing, then maybe it'd be profitable to keep it open for at least, uh, to the, uh, for some time this evening so that we can give you the answers that are requested. On the other hand, if, if it's your policy to close the public hearing and then we can provide the answers to, say, building height and other particulars, then, you know, we're happy to do that by way of editing the document or an email or whatever you prefer.
Let, let's see if there's anybody here who are out on the internet that wants to make any comments on this at this point. Anyone here? Anyone out there? Okay, um, does anyone think that we need any more on the record input? Does anyone think that we need any more on the record input?
I don't think so, I think we, we have in the past, you know, with, with respect to the writing or drafting or revising the de- the decision. You know, we have in the past worked with the applicants to clarify language or comment, but not as long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't rise to the level of submitting new information for the record, it's more of a you know, making sure that our decision says what we want it to say in, in terms that are consistent with the way the applicant looks at things.
Yep. My only comments at that point is just, some of the questions in the decision is things like the square feet and such, such like that, that my comprehension is that they are all, all those answers are in the submitted materials. If there's something that's new in other kids' mind, it's probably safest to leave it open just to let them answer it. But if it, if we think it's all there, then we can close and get this, get the clarification, I believe.
I, I like, I like to get the hearing closed so that we're not, you know, so we're not chasing our
Sure.
tails.
Yeah.
Um, and I think usually it works, I don't, it looks to me like it's it ought to work out here, so.
So I move and close the hearing?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's no, no more input from anyone?
We don't see any hands on Zoom or in the room? Moved and seconded?
No, well.
Yes.
I have, I, I didn't actually hear, uh.
I think I heard Justin.
I did move to close the hearing.
And I seconded.
Yeah. Moved and sank discussion. Hearing ended.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Veca Trumman.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. The hearing is closed. Now we can look at the draft. Um, unfortunately, the draft comes up in an unusable form on my particular computer. Um, because it's in, in Word format, not in PDF.
Right, right, yeah, it was hard to um, capture the comments.
Well, actually, I, the wa- the way it came up here, I don't even, oh, yeah, no, there's one. Two, okay.
Um, yeah. Oh, sorry, that's the wrong.
Remember what I said about computer problems?
Yep.
Anyway, you, you can, you can touch on them as we go along here.
Sure, so um, we'll just go through, um, it's probably the easiest way to do this, so the just confirming that this calculation is correct, ten thousand one hundred and sixty square foot, um.
That's about what it is per floor, but there are three floors in each building.
Okay.
If you just add the phrase per floor, that would be perfect.
You can do that if that's. Okay. Sorry, meant to. Okay, so.
On finding six on that page, if I may, there's a recitation that the site is a large concrete pad. Um, there was a pad, as we call it, prepared, a flat area, but there is no concrete. So I would suggest striking the word concrete.
Okay.
And I think concrete appears, uh, it does in finding twelve.
Yep, I will, uh, I'll go through, I think that that was from the, uh, application package, so that's where I got that.
Okay, so you're getting those.
Yep, I'm just gonna get it to myself.
And finding forty-six C mentions concrete, just to call.
Okay.
Tell me when we're running.
Okay, so that's.
Finding eighteen?
Eighteen, yep.
We can confirm that the um, the height does not exceed forty feet.
Do we have a height yet?
Do you know a number?
Thirty-nine and change, I think, don't have an exact number, it's under forty.
Okay.
Can we get that to you?
The architect. That's from the architect's design.
Alright, so just the board want to receive that information?
Do what?
Do you, the board want to receive that information in advance or just?
No, it's a cond- well, um, it should be a condition.
Okay.
I suppose. I don't think it's gonna get a building permit, is it?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, okay.
The applicant has stated that the building height does not exceed forty feet.
Okay.
I think that, for me, that's good enough to, that it will not exceed forty.
Okay.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, sorry, my. Okay, so that's that, um.
Finding nineteen is redundant with finding five.
Okay, I'll strike that.
And renumber.
And renumber, yep.
But not until after we do the rest of this.
Right.
We're not looking at your live copy.
Yep.
Um.
Yep.
All right, um, finding twenty-six?
Yeah, that came up, um, in a couple of hearings, I just haven't gotten the letter yet, so I just want to make sure the record's complete. It's really, that's all I was.
I'm sorry, I'll email that to you tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And um, applicant will need to confirm in twenty-seven, forty-seven LEDs.
Yeah, how many lights?
Can you go through the plan when you get a chance and confirm that number? Yeah, Norman will go through the plan and confirm that number, he didn't have a chance to.
Forty-seven lights, forty-seven light bulbs, I can't remember.
Okay.
You counted forty-four?
Okay, that's what I got the first time, then recounted again, and then I go, I just like, you know what, I'm gonna, okay.
I'll count and let you know, alright.
Okay. Okay, so.
Twenty-nine, thirty-nine?
I had something on, on finding thirty-seven?
Uh, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven repeats a statement that was also included in finding thirty-five.
Okay. So I'll strike that.
Thirty-seven can be, yeah.
Okay, sure.
No.
Um, so, moving on to finding thirty-nine, so this was mentioned in, um, the peer review letter. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that's gonna, that that's brought to your attention and that it'll be incorporated, um, I did include a condition, so.
On the final plan.
Yeah, to include on the plan.
Should we bring you a whole new set of plans on Friday?
Okay.
Uh, a concombs tomorrow night, hopefully we get that approved tomorrow night and then I won't have any other changes, so.
Okay.
Finally, and that, that, cause we put the crosswalk in.
Yes, I saw that.
Stop line, but we didn't, the warning signs will be shown on the revised plans, you know, that stops pedestrian crossing ahead, that warning sign.
Yep, okay. Okay, just wanna make sure. Alrighty. Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm compliance, I'm just being extra, extra cautious here, um, and just put this board, something that they they wanted to delve, delve deeper into it, um, and include a condition. Um, the no more than three feet of landscaping adjacent to and along each exterior wall of the five proposed buildings.
You're looking at which?
Finding forty-seven.
Forty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, this is a requirement under five point two point two point three of the bylaw.
So she's putting that in about the three feet?
Is that, that can be.
Correct, Norman. No more than three feet of landscaping adjacent to the exterior.
I believe that's correct, yeah, that's correct.
It, it says there will be more than three feet.
Will be.
At least three.
There will be at least three.
More than, I beg your pardon, yeah.
Okay.
No.
So finding forty-eight, I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to talk through this, the usable common space that's on the site plans. Um, it includes some areas that, just based on the definition in the bylaw, it's, it does, it's not technically, it's accessible, i- it seems like it's the, there's a portion that's used for that calculation that's cut off by the wetlands. It's also, it seems like there's a portion that's being used in that calculation that's on the other side of the slope.
So, so one of the sheets is a colored drawing.
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
That shows which is, uh, not wetland or easement. And then that area more than ex, is more than enough to satisfy this, this bylaw?
I mean, the, yeah, the usable commonspace calculation was significantly over the minimum required amount. So I don't think it'll be a problem, but it was just something that I wanted to flag if it ever loads.
Cause it's not one of the players, it's all colored up.
Yep, yep. Sorry.
There, is that?
So my concern was this area and this area, it's also, um, I don't know how accessible this, this area would be. Because if you're.
So those gray areas did not get included in the calculation?
Right, yeah, I know, the green area is what I'm, yeah, what I'm referencing, um.
So there's way more than enough to, uh, meet the regulation?
Let me zoom in. So based on this map, yeah, a hundred and twenty thousand square feet is required and three hundred and eighty thousand, give or take, is proposed.
Yeah, almost double, yeah.
Yep, but I just, if the area is not ex- accessible per se underneath the definition of the bylaw, if we needed to revise the calculation to be more accurate.
I, well, you can walk through the easement to get to the other land, you can walk through the.
And it's walkable and
Yeah.
it's safe for people to u- use.
Maybe not for someone my age, but it's, it's safe for young people, yeah.
Don't want people think, you know, thinking that it's, it's safe when it, when it's.
Hmm.
Um, and if people are having to cross wetlands, et cetera.
Yeah, there's plenty of area to walk around and, and relax and get a good walk in.
How does, how does the board wanna address, I mean, if the board, if.
I could go either way, I'm, I'm okay to defer to the judge of the planning department.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I, I would, I would prefer to have you know, a confirmation that these areas fit the, fit this definition, all of them. Um, the de- definition being primarily designed and intended for the active and passive recreation of the occupants of the dwellings. It's like no one's gonna walk through wetlands to get to the usable open space that's on the plans, you know?
You could perhaps be a little picky and say that a hundred and twenty thousand square feet is required to be accessible.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as at least that much is accessible.
Mm-hmm.
The total amount is kind of irrelevant.
Right, right, and I think, I just, yeah, I brought it up, cause it, we do end up removing a couple of pieces, I just wanna make sure that the minimum requirement is still met, which doesn't seem like it'll be a problem, but um, cause it seems like this area here.
So if you want.
You're already there.
If you want, I could take out those three lower green areas, where they have to cross the easement to get to them, I, I can remove all those to give you a new calculation on that.
Yeah, that might be, uh, that, that might be the best option.
Well.
That'd be fine.
You could, I, I see one green area right there that calculates a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Right, I mean, with that alone.
That, that area alone, if it's, if it otherwise meets the criteria, it's.
Right.
We'll clarify that tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, if someone, you know, walks down the hill and falls or something, I just worry about it, so, okay. Alright.
Okay, what's next?
Alright, freezing right along.
Is there, is there municipal trash in Doug, in Grafton, their municipal, municipal trash hall? The question is, is trash gonna be collected by a private entity? Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, before we get to that though, the finding forty-nine, right, um, right below, I just want a confirmation, um, that, uh, requirements of section two point two point two point five are applicable.
It'll be part of the common open space of what will be a, um, the overall project.
So it'll be, it'll be retained by.
Owned, yes.
Mr. McGill, okay. Oh, I can't spell, okay. Alright, I'm sorry, you were talking about, oh yeah, garbage disposal, that's confirmed?
Yeah.
Heard you say?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great.
Yes, the town, the town, the town does not collect trash for.
Yeah, I just wanted to hear them say it. Okay.
And then sixty-six.
Yep. So there's some provisions for the water supply protection overlay district, um, one of them being runoff, being recharged on site, um.
Runoff, it's gonna be recharged on.
There's a lot of recharge on site.
Okay.
All, all the roofs and all the parking lots will all be recharged.
Okay.
That's the basic requirement of the water supply protection overlay district.
Yeah. Alright, and then, so there was a mention in the, um, traffic engineer's peer, peer review report about easements along the property line for sidewalks, I did mention in, um, my original memo um, that this site was, could, could potentially be considered, uh, uh, for an easement for the regional bike plan. Um, Grafton did a twenty sixteen bike plan, um, that corridor was flagged for that, and during that planning process. Um, so I just wanted to, to bring that up and talk through that with.
So our side of one twenty-two is coming off the state layout, it's pretty much like that.
Yeah.
So, uh, bike path should be on the other side of the road.
Okay.
Sidewalk bike path should be on the other side of the road.
Okay, and the considering easements for sidewalks, was that feasible?
Well, why, why do it if the sidewalk can't be built there, I mean, it's like this, coming off one twenty-two.
Okay, just the board, any thoughts about it?
How wide is the state layout?
Fury's quite a bit across the street, cause they relocated it years ago, so it's like sixty to a hundred, depending on where you are.
So that there's road might not be in the right place, but there's room within the layout for.
Yeah, the road's not, not in the middle, the road is more on our side of the layout.
Right, um, they went through a lot of finagling to get, squeeze some sidewalk in along one twenty-two, you know, more up towards the northern part of, of the, you know, coming down from Worcester.
Mm-hmm.
All through there. Um, they tried, tried to rework the road a bit and they got sidewalk in, sort of. Uh, most, but not all of the way.
Hmm.
Um, they, there'd be some width whether it's in the right place or not, but at least there'd be some width in the layout. For whatever that might be worth, okay, what are we doing next?
Well, we'd rather not encumber the property with that, that easement, I mean, it's, it's on the side of a hill.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if it's dangerous. Right, if there's no hope of putting a sidewalk.
Oh, there's no hope.
On your side of the.
There's no hope.
On your property.
Yeah.
What happens within the state right away is.
There's, there's always hope, the state can do whatever they want.
They could move the road away from us and then they'd have plenty of room.
They could move the road away, or they could build a wall.
So that's talking, right, that's, that's considering what might happen within the states right away.
Well, um, no, if there was an easement on their side, state could use the easement, put up a wall and fill.
Ah.
So that's not too likely.
State layout comes across the pavement and then there's the shoulder, and then it goes down the hill, and then there's the property line.
Hell?
So it's down the hill a good ten, fifteen feet before it gets to the bounds of the property line, then it goes downhill another ten or fifteen feet.
I'm, I'm okay knowing the, the layout right there to not worry about an easement.
Okay, let's move on.
Right, if, if ultimately the state wants to do something that might, does involve.
They'd have to move the road away.
They, they, they could at the time, if there was a need, they could negotiate an easement with you, but that's not something that seems necessary for us to include in this decision.
No. That's the, I think that's the last one I see. Is that, am I right?
One second, let me just check.
Well.
Sorry, that's a lot, uh.
Should we raise that?
I think so, yeah.
Item C thirty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I can address.
Recording.
There, there's a requirement, and, and it may be a carryover from a definitive plan decision or the like, but there's a requirement that there be a, a final plan set and a format eligible for recording. Um, so this contemplates, you know, milars, planning board signatures and presentation to the registry. And I can tell you from experience that these types of plans are not generally what the registry accepts for recording, cause they're not definitive plans or A and R plans or the like.
Yeah, that, that caught my eye as well.
Yeah, that, that caught my eye as well, uh, condition thirty four and condition thirty five. That's language that you find from definitive plans, uh, but we don't, you know, we don't.
Record a decision which refers to the plans on record at the town.
Right, so the, the town has, you have an interest certainly in having the official plan set available. I, I believe that, you know, customarily, the decision gets recorded. It will refer very specifically to plans by land planning dated such and such, revised as of such and such. And then, of course, you'll get a final set of those plans, uh, to be kept on record with the town. We don't, we don't historically, we don't require plans like this to be recorded, nor do we endorse plans like this.
Right, right.
That's typical. That, that, that caught my eye as well as reading through to the decision. Right, so, and I mean, it seems like a minor point, but I don't want the applicant to be in technical violation of the special permit on something like that. So I would just suggest revising the language, say a, a final plan set, and, and if you want it on my law, that's fine. So it's durable to, to be kept on record at town hall or something.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that for special permits, we normally require the conditions to be recorded in the plan. I think that, that also re, re, is, is what we do for definitive plans. I don't think we, I double check on that, but I don't think that we expect conditions to be recorded.
Right.
As described. I think this whole thing is pretty much, or, you know, a, a part of this at least is, uh, it reflects the language that we put into a definitive plan decision.
Okay, so we can redact thirty five as well?
Yeah, thirty five, yeah, we don't endorse plans like this. That's, again, that's a definitive plan thing.
Okay.
If we want to back up a moment to condition twenty eight. I think the reference to section one blank two dot two dot four dot four is inappropriate.
Yes, sorry about that.
That's VMU language. Five dot two dot three dot four looks to me like the appropriate reference here.
Five dash two dash two.
Five da, dot two dot three dot four.
Okay, sorry about that.
Minor detail, but.
Yeah, I'm just gonna just.
Minor detail, but one of the important ones usually.
Yep.
Yep, and then the next item I have is on condition forty.
Yep. Yeah.
Condition forty is something that you would do for condo development, not for an apartment development.
Okay, so we don't wanna.
We don't expect there to be an association of homeowners.
Okay.
For an apartment development.
Okay, because I have seen, seen this in other decisions. Or rentals. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, condition forty is. That's applicable only to a condo development.
Okay.
So A is going to thirty four, A is going.
Correct, yeah. And when I read that, I thought, I recognized that there were a couple of places earlier up that also reference association of owners, language that's applicable only to condos. But the one that we were looking at earlier was essentially quoting the zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which is, yeah, it's okay to leave in there. Just, this, this decision shouldn't have any conditions or requirements that would be applicable only to a condo development.
Let's keep it moving. What, what next?
That's it, I have.
That's the, that's the last one I had.
Anybody else?
I, Dave had a few more than I did, but they all overlapped with the ones I did.
What's that?
I'm good.
You're good. Jim?
I'm good.
Pre, pre, preble?
I'm all set.
Okay, so what are we doing? You're going to, we're not gonna try to approve at this point. We're gonna.
Do we want to review a, an updated version of the decision before we approve everything?
Well, that's what I'm.
I get. I think that's your question.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of lines where, where it's written, the board has voted to either deny or approve. So how can you update all those lines without a vote? I think they would have to vote, so you.
Well, we do have to.
We haven't voted any of that yet. Okay, okay. We're gonna have a way some. We're gonna say, approve that thing. All right.
Right, we ti, we typically vote to find, to make favorable findings, which resolves those.
And then I was gonna update it, okay.
So I have a suggestion that will be, at least from my suggestion, we have to the chairs and the planning department's opinion. We could approve the decision as we discussed and drafted with the chair making a final approval. But I'd listen.
Don't, don't, no, 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 no.
So, yeah, we, we have occasionally done that subject to review by somebody.
Different chairs, Dave.
By the, by this, this person who has been a chair and when such things have happened.
Now, if you wanna do, do it with him, then.
If, if Dave's comfortable with that, I'm okay with it as well.
What do you think?
I think with what we've got here, it, there, there are no, no sign, significant issues here. It's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think everything that, and the outstanding questions were covered in the can, in the condition. Um, but, you know, process wise, I know that there's a preferred process and, you know. I'm.
So if, if, if the board is comfortable voting to make all the appropriate favorable findings and approve the decision with the conditions as, you know, stated with this changes that we've discussed, subject to review by somebody.
The vice chair.
To sort of con, confirm that the final decision accurately reflects what we discussed. If the board wants to move that way, I, I would be willing to be the stuckey on that.
All right. Is staff comfortable with that as a plan?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I move that the board finds favorably on all findings. And is there any waivers?
Yes.
We grant all waivers as drafted and we approve, we make an approval of the decision pending final confirmation of discussion items by vice chair, Mr. Robbins.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Vecatraman.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hasner.
I vote aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Great, thanks for your efficiency. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. It's been a long, I, I remember signing that plan for the supermarket.
Yeah.
When it was down there. It was at, at, at the beginning of a town meeting. The planner brought it to us, as I recall. And before, we met before the meeting, special meeting.
Nineteen ninety-three.
Yeah.
Thirty years.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, good night, folks. Good night, thank you.
All right. Next up. Next up is. Continuation of special permit twenty twenty-three dash ten, site plan approval at seven Main Street.
Good morning, everybody. It's true that it's morning somewhere in the world.
Great, great. Yeah, well, um, I feel like it's.
You're not quite there yet.
The room is beginning to cool off now.
Amen.
Is I'm, I'm.
So, um, welcome, so I'm just gonna do a quick overview. So we, um, the planning department and, um, Leslie, and we went back and forth, uh, with feedback about the plans, revisions, and, um, ultimately, a site plan, a revised site plan was submitted. Let me pull, let me navigate to the page here, um. So a, um, revised site plan and response to, uh, town department comments and peer review was submitted. Um, so essentially what we're doing is going through, uh, those exhibits, uh, that we hadn't, hadn't seen yet since the last hearing and going through any kind of outstanding issues. So I think probably it makes the most sense to go through the response to the peer review letter. Um, it's probably the most efficient unless you have anything specific that you.
I don't have anything specific, um, you guys have probably been working with Zach. He left HST, so, um, I took over his, his jobs, so, um, that's fun. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we can go through, um, all the, I don't know. I mean, some of them are.
Yeah, I mean the.
Just, you know, acknowledged and they were prior to, but we can, I think, go through those rather quickly.
Yeah, I think that.
There's not many that are outstanding.
I mean, I can talk through what I, I reviewed this beforehand and if it's more efficient, then I can just.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Yep, so there was a couple of comments from Graves Engineering that were still outstanding.
Okay.
Um. Let me see. Oh, gosh, gotta get there. Um, it's toward the end here.
It's at the very end.
Yep.
Because it's at the after exhibit twenty-two.
Yeah, so, um, the hydrology, uh, computations still need to be revised, um, per, um, number eight and then number nine. Uh, two of the four orig, original comments in the peer review letter, um, have been addressed, but the other two are outstanding. So I don't know if you wanna, um, speak to those or if you, um.
Um, all right, so eight and nine, um, eight, um, provide comment concerning the amount of impermeable cover on the site.
And I can.
And the extent of groundwater recharge, once the other comments, which are the same to me, are addressed. Uh, review hydrology found them in order to be accepted as noted in the following four comments. So that kind of revolves back on itself, because there were four comments. Two of them are completed. Number nine is saying that those other ones were found to be in compliance. So wouldn't that make eight in compliance if nine is in compliance?
Hmm. I wo, uh, I wouldn't.
Because there, there's nothing to be revised if, if everything under nine, the hydrology computations found them to be in order.
Except.
Except as noted in the following four comments.
Right, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
But it said that those are all acknowledged and.
It says in number thirteen, um, just the first one that I saw, the hydrology computations were not advised to address this comment. Um, and then number twelve, it says the sheet flow lengths are excessive and the times of concentration for the sub catchments are.
But it, it says here, the calculations have been adjusted to be fifty feet for twelve, number twelve, which is what he was asking for.
Okay, because this is exhibit twenty-one that was submitted.
This, I mean, this is the letter you sent me.
Exhibit twenty-two.
We haven't received a updated plan set since.
Right.
The Graves review that was dated the twenty-seventh, which was exhibit twenty-one. You replied to your.
I replied, just, I replied, I sent you guys and Graves the response.
The response.
We have not got the updated plans with those corrections.
Right.
That, but that's not on a plan. It's in the report. It's in the drainage report. That's not on a plan.
Okay, well, we also haven't received that. We haven't received any revenue.
It was in, it was included in this, this giant report.
I'm, I'm with you.
That I.
Right, the, the exhibit eighteen revised on November seventeenth, but then Graves.
And the drainage report is included in, in this.
Okay, because Graves submitted their response ten days later, saying that it's still not, it still requires modification.
So this is.
Are, are we making good use of our time here? There's a, a, a lack of.
It's just, I don't.
Well.
I said.
But, but I don't know whether we're gonna solve it here. I think somehow.
Okay.
You people have to get together.
These, these plans were printed on eleven twenty-one twenty-three. That's when I sent them in. These comments from Graves Engineering are dated November twenty-seventh, which is after.
Yes.
Yeah, so Graves indicates that.
Every, so everything would have been received prior to.
To Graves comments saying there were still things to do.
Right, so Graves, Graves comment on the dated November twenty-seventh.
Right.
References.
That there's.
Plans that were last revised November twentieth. And the stormwater report dated revised November seventeenth.
But, but these changes were made on the twenty-first. And that's when they were sent in. And that's where Graves is saying that.
Okay.
That the calculations were adjusted and are now correct. Like, I, I hadn't, me, like, they're in the report. They're not in the set of plans. Like, these are numbers that are in the drainage report, which are in this big packet, which I know I. Sent, yeah, it's in.
Says it should match what's in the plan, so it's either the plans or the report is updated, but we haven't received anything.
So if you, so if you go through that drainage report part where you're at, it'll, there's a section that.
Yeah, let's just orientate me there, so we're not.
I like can see, but no. So it's more towards the end. I like can't see it from here.
I mean, I'm on page five.
So it's in the report, it's.
Right, but where? Okay, so, okay, so just, just so I'm clear, because I'm getting a little confused. So the Graves comments.
Yes.
Were addressed in the revised report that you've submitted, revised as of November seventeenth. And the, um, other comment which he had was.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is, I understand the dates, but that it doesn't really make sense if he's saying that all the other.
Okay, so we'll just have him do a final double check and make sure that everything checks out.
Yeah.
And.
Because.
Because if there's.
Before we do that, if I may interject there, because enough of this, as far as I'm concerned. Are you clear? Are we all clear of exactly what they need to clear up so we can do our homework and make sure that they're, because this is killing me financially and for my business and for my family and for my employees. I just want to get this done, done right and move on, so we need to be on the same page and make sure we have. You're saying they got everything, as long as we know exactly what it is, so this, enough is enough with it all, to be honest. And I don't mean to be, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but this is my livelihood here, you know?
I, I, I think.
And I stand by, if, if, you know, he's saying that except for those four comments, then he says those four comments are, are okay, that they're correct.
So we'll just, we'll get a final confirmation from Graves about that.
All, all, at this point.
Because you're still not gonna have, I mean, the decision isn't obviously ready yet, so it's, you're still gonna have another meeting anyway.
So what else do we need, though, for this decision? I asked the board yourself, you know, what else do we need to provide you so this, this doesn't.
So that.
What, what else are we lacking to do?
That piece of information, and then I had a couple of questions that I wanted to discuss. And then, other than that, I mean, we're not waiting for any other peer reviews besides that letter from Graves. You're, you requested a waiver from traffic, so there's nothing there. Um, staff comments, I've, we've already gone through and there's nothing outstanding from other departments. So no, you know, nothing major. I just. No, you know, nothing major, I just wanted to go through a couple of things that I flagged. So just going to. Number. So um in response to the lighting, um details of the fixtures will be submitted with this letter um. Do you? Am I missing?
They're they're in there. They're at the very end. Of the document.
Okay, this I'm at the end.
Do you have these?
I don't, I don't have that, so that's that's okay, cause you can just send that to me and then that's fine.
Yeah, at this point, we're really, we're pretty much just wanna make sure that everything's properly on the record.
And that's what I wanna make sure they want our part that we're not lacking anything else, you know what I'm saying um?
Yep, it sounds like there's a, we got just a couple of detailed questions about.
There there's a good bit of time between now and the next meeting.
Are you gonna talk to Jeff or or would you like me to talk to?
I'll send him a an email, that's.
What were you saying, sir, I apologize, what were you saying?
Okay, so on in the site plans for, I'm just gonna pull these up. Cause I just want a confirmation, I mean. That under three point, three point, three point four in the letter. That this is. Compliant. Not less than ten feet property line or the minimum sat back is stabilized with vegetation or plantings of some kind. I mean, I'm looking at the. The site plan and. It's not clear to me, so I mean, I don't know how. How much the board wants to.
Point, three point.
Three point four, so this what I have highlighted here.
Not less than ten feet from the property line around the perimeter of the property.
Cause I just see um.
Cause that.
It's I see the vegetation here. And then I see plantings uh that were, the plantings that were adjusted per the requirements of the bylaw for the parking areas and I see plantings. Along here, but I'm just checking about checking around the perimeter, cause that is what the language says um.
I believe I labeled that as grassed area.
Okay, wonderful, I thank you. There's loading that's going to be located at the front of the building.
In the front of the buildings, yes.
Yep, okay. And then you said that you had made my um you highlighted that, can you just? Um confirm. Or you indicated that on the plans?
That that's existing, so keep going. There should be. I think it would be on that grading plan that you were just on. There should be some labels that say. Loading area in front of. The buildings.
Okay, I don't. I don't think I see that, but that's not groundbreaking, you know, that's not like a make or break um. It's just something to. Where the loading will occur, we just need to know where it is in reference to the site so that. You know, we can make sure that it's compliant. Go ahead.
Sheet three, I just found it's mentioned.
Oh, you did, okay.
It says garage bay door location garage space to be used as loading spaces.
Okay, wonderful, sorry. Okay, and I don't think I have. Much else, I mean, there was, I did flag. Compliance with um twelve point nine through twelve point twelve of the V M U which. And you know, the bicycle parking and things like that, but it seems like that's not. Feasible and I don't know how far the board has gone in the past with enforcing the design guidelines um, but obviously. You know, it's something that we should, we should consider at least talk about um. You know, the specific performance standards and design standards, outdoor menne space, public realm standards, et cetera um. The applicant did. I did request changes to be made um to. Fit the um the requirements of the V M U which were addressed. Um but it's just this additional design work and things like that that I. You know, I'm, the minimum requirements are met, but. I mean, there's nothing in here speaking to, but I mean, Leslie does say. Completed in twelve point nine, completed as commented by the planning board um, I'm not sure what that. So I'm not sure what the the board has done historically, but I mean, obviously, we're trying to cultivate like a vision for this area and.
Interestingly enough, historically, we've not. We've not done much permitting in the V M U district. Although the V M U district in this case has been around for some eleven years. This is probably these. To my best my recollection, this is the second project that we've. Permit, because a lot, a lot of potential projects in the M U do not require planning board review to review to begin with.
Right, and Graves doesn't, you know, check for this type of thing, it's really on, it's really on us and.
I think we've only done one, previously done one special permit in V M U. And that was for residential. So there's not, there's not a lot of history to draw on here.
So I mean, I guess we could. Discuss that, I mean, is there, is there a limit, limitations to meeting that and if so, you know, what are they?
Can can we focus on what the board needs to be involved in and what? You can straighten down.
Okay, I mean, this is.
The the, you know, we have all this, well, it says no, it doesn't say over there, no, he didn't. That's not. We're not helping with that. She's she's gotta say everything is is. All the, all the, all the dots. Over all the eyes. And identify any actual questions.
Yeah, I'm just not clear on what that question.
There's requirements in this zone. In our bylaw, there's certain standards. There's like design standards and how, you know, a lot of.
Specifically.
Performance standards, things of that, things like.
Pedestrian and bicycle access, landscaping, yard treatments. Parking areas, trash and service areas.
Public realm standards.
I understand that. When this letter was given to me. This line, the applicant complies with this provision was already. In this letter, so when I was reviewing the. The letter to respond to the comments that needed to be responded to. You know, I didn't even, I didn't even read that one.
Which letter, who said that?
This is the the letter from the town.
I didn't say that, it says right there. This is the letter that I wrote. And this is, these are the rec, these are the requirements of the zone.
I don't think we're getting anywhere here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's up to the board how far they wanna go with enforcing it, the minimum requirements are met um.
The the minimum requirements. Then that's fine. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, what more, what more should we do or could we do? We've had very little. Experience as Dave says with with that, I think. We sold the V M U on on the idea that we'd have. A happy play, it would help us build a happy place. So we should do what we need to do to make sure we get a happy place.
The V M U was intended to be fairly flexible in terms of. You know, design requirements and you know, and a lot, a lot of the details. Some of the design standards in V M U are are really. Some of them are more oriented towards a residential or a mixed use, it's strictly commercial here, which is one of the allowable uses and. Some of, some of what you see in V M U doesn't really, doesn't really fit. With an application like this, so. We have to be somewhat flexible and then, and I think although I don't know how clearly is stated in the V M U. The design they're described as design standards and not design guidelines, but there's not. A lot of guidance in there to say exactly when and where and how you should apply those. And in fact, the V M U zoning to a, to a significant degree, degree anticipates. That the V M U projects will be. Not subject to planning board review, except for those that are special permits uses. But some of the uses, some of the potential uses there don't, don't even come to the planning board for review. So there's a, there's, there there's a, there's a certain amount of ambiguity and flexibility built into that. And as we've said, we have, we 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 haven't applied it. Enough to really get a good sense, there's some, there's some. The way some of the V M U zoning is written, I have, I have a little bit of a problem with some definitions of road, roadways and streets. But I don't wanna get into, you know, I think we're, we're, we're dealing with one project here and trying to find a way forward through this. And I don't know how much more your project can be expected to do that it hasn't already done.
When Fiona says the bases are covered.
The minimum, yeah.
Do we need to do anything more, I think not.
With a thought to closing?
It sounds like we've got a thought to close the hearing. Uh or keep it open, cause we've got a few details to be verified. And to be on the safe side, if we keep it open, either way, it's gonna be January eighth is our earliest opportunity to. Approve a decision. And if we keep the hearing open until then, to receive any additional information that might need to come in. It doesn't delay the schedule at all.
So I think there is some confusion between the previous member of your company. And where you you believe we sit and we're staff and at least my reading of the stuff please we sit, that needs to be figured out. I do not, at least for where I feel we sit right now, I do not feel comfortable asking the staff to do any sort of a decision if. They do, you know, and they have. And they find copious free time, which I don't think they're going to, then, you know, things can happen, but I think we have. Absolutely need to leave the hearing open until at least January eighth to make sure that. The assumptions we have. Situation between the confusion and, you know, making sure all our Ts are dotted are. Is all set and if there is more to do because something is not actually addressed, then that can be addressed before January eighth that we can take it up then. But I think, at least from my standpoint, I think we need to keep the hearing open and we can meet again and talk more, January eighth in the meantime.
So is the guidance to suggest that they request to go on and continue to the eighth and. Sort out any issues with Fiona?
That seems to be what.
Policy decision the board needs to make. Yeah, well, unlike, you know, unless there is one. And then. We'll decide, we know, we don't have it now, so it'll, we'll have it on the eighth. You'll tell us about it on the eighth. Okay.
Mainly mainly between now and then, we're gonna confirm. You guys are gonna con- confirm that. All the documentation is in order.
If I, I have just one question, you probably, I'm sure you know the answer, but I wanna know the answer. Who's gonna be contacting Graves, is it our responsibility or are you gonna do that? I mean, again, I just don't want there to be any, he said, she said thing.
But but we're the ones that ask the questions and get the answers. She's, she's the middle person. Is there anything other than talking about a continuation request? Alright, you got a form? Oh, uh is there anyone in the public who has input on this? Here or in the internet, okay, apparently not.
No hands raised in Zoom land. Alright. I will move that the board grant the applicant's written request, which is to be received within a matter of minutes. Uh to continue this hearing to Monday, January eighth, twenty twenty four at seven thirty P M.
Moved in second. Hearing done.
Mister Robbins. Mister Vecchittroman. Mister Davidson. I vote aye and Mister Hassener.
Motion carries unanimously.
Happy New Year, thank you for your patience.
Now then. Are twelve minutes gonna get the rest of the agenda done?
No. I move that we. Approve going past ten P M.
Moved in second, discussion, vote.
Mister Robbins. Mister Vecchittroman. Mister Davidson. I vote aye, Mister Hassener.
I motion carries unanimously. Moving right along. Continued hearing. On uh special permit twenty twenty three dash zero six, one twenty four West Borough Road.
This, we're, we're at the the tail end of this, I would think, um we drafted a decision. For review today, uh which I uploaded to the exhibits page um. I just wanted to, thank you, I just wanted to confirm, um I think we should go through a couple of things that are. In the, in the decision and I wanted to confirm aloud that Dan Dumay of M D M Transportation Consulting did not have. Any issues and confirmed that they were all set on their side, um so they are not in attendance this evening.
This one is a PDF and I can see. Your comments somehow magically. I I've never learned, I've never even close to being able to do that. But it, it's happier on my computer.
That's good. So. Kaylee, I don't know if you wanted to.
Yes, um so we um appreciate the board's consideration of our comments and feedback. Um I'm also here this evening with my attorney, Jason Tallerman. Who has also reviewed this and um. As an attorney, uh provided some helpful comments to to us as well, um hope the board will consider as well, so. I I think um the next, next steps is there might be some open items on the decision clarification, we had some suggested red lines. Um and I, I think we're just trying to finalize the decision tonight and and hopefully get an approval.
Yeah, no, so, um thanks, um Jay Tallerman, Meade Tallerman and Costa. Happy to be here, I I thought the decision actually wasn't really, was in really good shape, we're pretty close, it seemed like there was a few. Um little items that Fiona largely flagged, provided a couple of options back and forth, otherwise. It it seems like we're, we're right there, I thought maybe there's some things we could do to kinda. Smooth things, a few of those key things out in the margins, but mostly I think this is kind of at that point where. Ready for a vote.
Does the board want to? Do we, did we close the hearing at the last?
We did not close the hearing.
You're more familiar with what's coming up than I am. As far as do we need to have the hearing open or not at this point?
Natalia, do you know if the top of your, can you just confirm if we um closed the hearing at the last meeting?
We definitely did not.
Okay.
No, we did not.
Okay, so.
There was a continuous request on the twenty seventh.
Yep.
Exhibit fifty three.
Yep, okay, so do we want to?
At the least, we do have DYS that stayed around for this hearing on Zoom, so I don't know, they, if we want to do anything with the hearing before we close it.
Okay.
Sure.
Should we hear, well, do, do, do they have anything to say? Or do they just want to see this happen?
Us have anything to say?
No, I, the.
Department of Youth Services that, that is your neighbors up the street on Nysdru Road. Your butter.
Well, apparently.
Hello. Hi, hi, this is Jenny, I'm not sure if Stacy's back on.
I am here, yes I am.
Okay, I don't have any comments Stacy, but I don't know if you do.
I do not, I just hope, I, I trust Fiona has reviewed the drainage and the drainage, um, is sufficient so that we won't have, um, another situation on our other border.
Um, so the, I don't know if you were here at the beginning of the, the meeting, but the, um, DYS, your neighbor, um, is experiencing some, um. Flooding and drainage issues from the Woodland Hill and Winslow Point developments, um, we're, we're investigating that. But I just offered them the opportunity to stick around because, you know, we want to make sure that obviously, you know, butters are aware and if this is an ongoing issue, um, with them, that you're, you're aware as well. Um, and we just keep that line of communication open, um, I mean, I reviewed and Jeff obviously has reviewed the, um, erosion controls and. The landscaping, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it doesn't, I don't see any flags, um, but, I mean, again, we, we do have conditions in our permit that if there is an issue that comes at a later date, we can address it. But I didn't see any issues, but I just wanted you to be aware that they are here and, um, they do have some concerns about existing development going on, so.
You can give Stacy and Jenny our contact information as well, in case they want to reach out to us direct.
Yeah, okay.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and from my memory of the plans, there, I don't think there is any land disturbance at all that would be uphill from, you know, from their property this post construction.
Yeah. Josh, our civil engineer is on, but I also, I don't believe so. Okay.
Sorry about that, was the question, is there anything uphill of, um, the development that would drain towards the neighbor to our rear?
Yes.
Uh, no, everything generally, we are lopping off the top of a hill, but it all would then drain down towards, uh, the north side of the property.
Okay.
That aligns with my memory, thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's anybody else in the public who has any comments, I don't see no hands on Zoom, there's no one in the room, so.
Alright. I see. What, so far, I don't know, five, six. There's a bunch of items highlighted here, right?
Yeah, so.
Maybe.
But if we're.
I don't, I don't think anything that is in the highlights is anything that hasn't been discussed prior, and I think it's all for the board to decide on at this, you know, at this point.
Right, but do we want to close the hearing? Because that's.
Yeah, I think.
Before we go through the decision, that's what we, that's what we've been doing, so that's my question.
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion. Hearing none, vote.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mr. Vecatraman.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson.
Aye.
I vote aye and Mr. Hassener.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Alrighty, so just going through, um, I don't know if it's a more efficient use of time to talk about your concerns first and then hash those out because, um. Your attorney's here, so I think that, sure, yeah, well, we'll start there if that's.
Okay, point me to where I should look.
You know, we're happy to, I mean, I went through and I had a, a number of things, but most of them were just kind of more like stylistic, so we could ignore most of that. I did have a, I'm happy to kind of just kind of go through them in order, they will track a lot of what Fiona have already flagged from the, um. Um, a slight delta between our version and, and, and your version. There was one thing though on finding thirteen, F thirteen. It says fifty by fifty foot basing. I think that should be base spacing maybe?
That was, oh, of course.
Did you, what's F what?
F thirteen, there's the word in the third line.
Cause it's not.
Fifty by fifty foot basing.
It's not highlighted in there.
It's not highlighted, this, I just flagged.
That was from the, um, narrative materials, so.
It could have been a, oh, yeah, an error in our narrative, it's, it's supposed to say base spacing, so I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Doesn't make sense, I don't.
No, that's okay, I wasn't sure if there was like a, yeah, I would just include it.
Real estate lingo, no, it's not.
Yeah.
Just incorrect.
Can we fix that? Okay, moving on.
Ob- obviously, a, a lot of the findings had is, I think one of your prior applica-, uh, prior draft decisions had is, you know, will or will nots or. So I think we can clean that up just with an overall motion. At the end of it, so no need to go through any of those.
Yeah.
Um, first comment I think we had on conditions. Uh, this is a little nit of mine as, cause I, I do a lot of municipal law, so I kind of, I, I know Chris Brown and Chris Heap, so.
Yeah.
I, I, I see in decisions a lot, so condition number four.
Okay.
Totally fine condition in concept, we are, we will gladly accept a condition that we do everything that the ConCom says. Sometimes saying any order of conditions and or permits issued by the conservation with respect to this application are hereby incorporated by reference. You're incorporating by reference something that doesn't exist yet, so. As a lawyer, I don't mind the condition, as a lawyer, it couldn't possibly be binding. I'm just, that's just, I'm kind of compelled to point out, we can't compel something that may happen in the future.
Yeah, I think I've heard, and I don't remember whether it's in the context of some previous decisions that we've done or whether I've heard it in the. Planning workshop or something, but it, the, it's, it is pointed out that. An order of conditions or permits issued by the conservation commission is binding on the applicant regardless of what the planning board says or doesn't say.
Right.
So this, this language is kind of at best redundant.
It, it doesn't matter to me that much, it just, the only thing, the only reason it sometimes gets a little funky is because. Conservation is enforced by conservation through a whole separate process. Where zoning is enforced by the building commissioner under a whole separate process. And to have kind of cross those streams, so to speak, it can be a little awkward. So I, I have no problem whatsoever with this in concept that. You have a condition that says we have to like live by the law that is conservation and I don't even have a huge objection to this, it's just kind of awkward.
Yeah, like I said, the, the incorporated by reference part sticks in my mind as something that I've previously heard is advised that we, it's really kind of inappropriate. The rest of it, you know, just acknowledging that there could be an order of conditions and permit.
Yep.
Yeah, that's certainly a true statement.
No, no issue.
Whether we say it or not.
Right.
Uh, it's also not inappropriate to say that if some other permit of any kind requires a modification of plans.
Hundred percent.
Back to us for review.
I put this same condition in all the time in permits that I draft for planning boards, so.
Really, the only thing potentially problematic is that you incorporate.
It's just that second sentence, I think, um, so. Uh, I leave it to you, ultimately, if I had my druthers, I'd say take it out, if it stays in, it's basically harmless until we do something stupid, in which case then. We're running up against the issue that I have, but, um.
On general principles, I like, I, I like not to put things in that aren't really necessary.
Right.
So.
I would.
We have habitually put this in, but.
Yeah.
It is kind of, it's not totally appropriate.
If, if there was an instance where it already existed or a zoning board decision already existed or someone and we were incorporating by reference. It gets a little bit easier to wrap our hands around.
It, it has a meaning in that case.
Right, agreed.
I think.
And this is typically how we've done it in the past and with the interconnection between ConCom and this.
I, I'm not, we're not fighting it, if you want to keep it, keep it.
On this one point, just to briefly say, is, this is basically our form that we've typically stuck to for this condition. It probably wouldn't hurt to just, you know, noting their comment, asking our attorneys, and I'm saying. Not to block this decision, decision on the answer at all, but just ask our attorneys for future decisions, you know, is my thought and.
Yeah, no, again, it, it seems like boilerplate, we can live with it, I just kind of.
I think we beat it to death here.
Yeah, I think with, with new counsel and really good counsel, by the way, a really good decision on the part of the town, so I think that, you know, maybe take a look at it. Number six, so also not a highlighted one, but one that I flagged. And this is just a question for you all, you're going to rely, because the next paragraph says you're going to rely on it, on an engineer, this is a complicated project. And I just didn't know if the board itself, if we want to have the additional step of having the board do those inspections, if you do and if that's your practice, great. If you're going to rely on an engineer to do those inspections, then maybe state it.
Yeah, it's the board or it's designee and it's always the designee.
Right, I know, I'm just trying not to create an extra step in, in the inspectional process, I have every confidence in hearing from you. Um, Bob, it, it makes a lot of sense, so we leave it alone, I just, I don't want, if we have multiple levels of inspection, nothing ever gets inspected sometimes, so, okay.
It says we can go out there and, our people can go out there and take a look.
Alright, so number nine, which, um, uh, and thank you, I think Fiona, if you gave the two alternatives there.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not sure if I prefer one or the other more, but I do think the term ways and services could probably use a little bit better definition. There's not roadways per se here, it's things like paved areas, parking, uh, wait, um. You know, stormwater management, so I, I, I'm just not sure what that term means and I would kind of defer to Haley as to which version she likes, but there's, it's. I'm not, so what this is, there, there's two different things in here that don't exactly go together. The first is essentially a, a pocket covenant that you would do, essentially no occupancy until you do the infrastructure. That's what you would do in a subdivision to start out with. Fine in concept, no problem, I'm just not sure which infrastructure you're talking about here, there's a lot of infrastructure on this project, we should, ways and services, there's like a subdivision term. Where something is going to become public, this is not that case, so I'm not sure if we want to define it.
Why, why do we need to do that? Why do we need to?
Well, there's no ways here.
Not, yeah, why do we need to do whatever this might try to do? If, if you want to bring in tenants when the parking lot's not built, that's up to you.
Well, I, in, I, I agree, but I also understand why a board would want to have some assurance that we're not having tenants in. Until the basic stormwater management and paved areas are done, and I think that that is fair. I just, the, it's not really defined, I just don't know what ways, because there are no ways.
Yeah, well, do we have?
I would say project, essential project infrastructure or something like that might be fine.
Up to you, the board really, um.
I, I don't have a lawyer's head to, to tell you one way or the other on that.
Make it so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, some, some language that can be reasonably understood to mean the kinds of.
Yeah, it's stormwater management, it's the parking lots, it's the project entrance, you know, it's, it's not the little things like the finished landscaping and stuff, it's the big stuff. So.
Okay.
The second sentence isn't really that related, so I'm not exactly, and I would defer to Haley.
I think our, our, um, comment, so mine's in the yellow, right, because we thought that, um, it was fair to say that. Our traffic engineer Courtney has conducted traffic, I'm sorry, sorry.
Yours, hers, yours is not actually yellow, that was my yellow.
Oh, okay.
So yours, our language is the second, uh, sentence in the alternative version.
Th- this is nine or the applicant.
Yes.
This is, right?
Yes, that is yours.
Yes, so nine, the second paragraph in the yellow, any future change in use. Um, my point being that, uh, we had a traffic study prepared, it was peer reviewed by the town's peer reviewers. Um, any change that, that generates more traffic than what we projected than our traffic study, we would have to come back to you and seek approval.
Yeah, and I think, I, I tend to prefer, when I looked at this the other day, I, I, I preferred this, the second way of, any change that results in more, in a, uh.
Okay, is there any objection to saying, let's do that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the yellow, I don't have a version.
No, it's not yellow, it's, it's your alternative version.
Number.
Oh, okay, yellow one mine.
The yellow was mine that I sent to Haley.
What I said, number nine, the second, or.
Yep.
Yes, got it.
No one seems to be objecting to go with or, the or.
Okay.
The or part, yes, next.
Alright, number eleven. I think the, the issue here that Fiona flagged for you all is that our concern that one year, given all the kind of pre-stuff, all the. The, the money side of things, the planning, one year is difficult, so we would request two years to, for commencement of construction.
Yep, and, and when I read that, I looked at our zoning bylaw and. To the best of my understanding, our zoning bylaw does not give us the flexibility to do that.
Right.
The state law, the, you know, chapter forty eight allows the, the board to issue a, a permit for up to three years or. It allows the zoning bylaw to allow the board to issue a permit for up to three years, but the zoning bylaw is limited to one year and I couldn't find. A provision in the zoning bylaw that would allow us to do something differently.
Okay. You, you haven't seen.
I agree with you.
And, and is it a shall in the zoning bylaw or is it just special permits? Uh, the substantial use of special, because there may be a way around it, if, if it says a typical phrase that says substantial use shall occur within a year. If it, that's for all your special permits. Cause we could define what commencement of construction is. I mean, we can always come in for extensions too, obviously, we'd like to avoid that wherever we can.
Alright, I'm happy.
I kind of think that it's not well, uh, nailed down. But I, I think I know what you're talking about.
All other special permits, there's, there's an exception for major residential special permits, but all other special permits shall lapse one year after the date of granting if substantial use or construction has not been commenced.
So perhaps then the way around it, in, in that we're stuck with a year is what we say what substantial use or commencement of construction is.
Was saying.
And, and maybe because no, it's, I always find it helpful to define that term commencement of construction, um, and.
Construction, it becomes use, it's use, isn't it?
Substantial use or construction.
Or construction.
Or construction.
Right.
And that, that's why, that's why I said thirty-three years ago when I read that, I said.
And the cases are actually all over the place on that too, some people say, well, just the recording of a decision and then another court will say something else. If we had something in a kind of, putting Haley on the spot here that said the commencement of construction or some, uh, commencement of substantial use would be. Substantial site work or grading within a year, then that, that might, I mean, it's going to take them a while to get going after we get an approval, so.
But may, may, maybe just come back and ask for another year when.
But I thi- I think it's helpful to say something about what is expected of us in the year. Like some, some towns would say build a foundation or build the main, uh, entryway or.
A shovel on the ground.
Nah. If the bylaw doesn't define it, I'm not sure whether we.
You could, it's up to you.
Well.
I'm trying to make it easier so you and, you all and GFI are on the same page and that there's no mistaking when we've, when we've made use. Now, we'll come back if we're not ready and ask for an extension.
I, I think. I thi- I think maybe we just, that would be.
Okay, I mean, if that, if that's where you are, then, then that's where you are, I, I, I find it helpful as much for you as it, as for us to kind of state what the parameters are.
I don't, I, I don't see a, I don't see a better answer right now.
Okay.
Fourteen?
Fourteen, the first sentence, um, not a complete sentence. Fourteen, the first sentence, um, not a complete sentence. So I I don't know, it's a description, nothing wrong with it, but it's. I don't know if there's an is missing somewhere in there.
Yeah, that that first sentence of fourteen is not a complete sentence.
Yes, thank you, Dave.
That's, that's just a typo, and I apologize.
Yes, I was, uh, yes, okay, I'll fix that.
Fif- fifteen, um, there's been some suggested alternative language. Um, we, we thought that the. Initially proposed language, I think they essentially say the same thing, but um. A little bit more user friendly for us in our relationships with tenants to um. Apply the alternative language. I also had potentially an amendment to the first set of language. Fiona's language, if in fact you don't like the alternative language, but. We're committed to teaching up all of our tenants on the good neighbor commitments, regardless of how we formulate it. Just having um, the steady stream of compliance reports, I think we'll be swimming in them initially, and it's just kind of hard to keep track of.
If I may ask, what is your suggested change to Fiona's initial?
So what what I, what I have here is, and I'll read it to you, and I'll um, just, it's a little easier. Uh, I say per exhibit thirty, the applicant and any tenant thereof, that's my added language. Must comply with the good neighbor commitments listed below throughout the lifespan of the project. And here's some new language. The applicant shall include the requirement for such compliance with every lease for space at the project. The applicant shall provide a compliance report once every year on a date to be determined by the planning board. The compliance report shall include verification of compliance and provide supporting documentation. Documentation of that effect as may be necessary.
Sounds good. Anybody?
Are we, so we're replacing the in, all of this, or we're keeping the?
All of fifteen?
Because there's specific um, commitments that are called out. That we would like to. Keep, keep called out.
Oh, no, all the, all the commitments are still there.
Okay, so I just wanted.
No, no, we don't want to change any of the commitments themselves.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure if we were consolidating into that.
Our, our thought is that we're in charge. Of making sure the tenants comply, will provide. Compliance reports, a compliance report annually that our tenants are complying. It's on us.
Yeah, 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 and that's, that's.
That, that's, that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at.
When you said the. Your wording for the fifteen just now out loud, I thought I heard you say the applicant and all tenants must comply.
Did they, the tenants are still, still have to comply because some of the commitments are tenant commitments. But we're the ones in making sure that they comply. So we, we're responsible for proving to you that there's compliance. But they are still required, so if they blow it, there's still zoning enforcement against us as the applicant. But we're the ones that are gonna be reporting back to you rather than getting this kind of piecemeal collection of. Kind of a nondescript compliance report.
That works for me.
And and I can get you that, that exact language, Fiona, yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
Anything?
Works for me.
I'm good.
Okay.
Great. Excellent.
Where are we going?
So we're still in the conditions.
So let's see, next one. Uh, B two. There wasn't, there wasn't anything in between, so this would be. Trying to think, my pagination might be a little different than yours, twenty-one.
The conditions to be met prior to startup construction.
Right, so B two.
Submitted to the board for endorsement.
So similar to a comment in a previous application, I don't think we have an endorse. Yeah, there's a lot of requirement, the next one talks about us providing some plans, so I just don't think we need B two.
Okay, that's fine.
If there's no objection, get rid of that, right? What's next?
Uh, look like C one, next page.
Five P M or seven?
Yeah, this, this is a bylaw requirement, um. So I'm not, I'm not familiar with, if we can override that.
Let's go with the bylaw. Since, and lo- unless you found some power for us to uh.
I I didn't, and I looked. The general bylaws uh, says fi- five, says five, seven A M to five P M.
Ja- general bylaw, not.
It says, on, in Fiona's comment, it says seven P M is allowed per the general bylaws. Is that not right?
I'm sorry, wait, hold on one second, getting my lines crossed here.
Talking about the five.
Right. I don't know what it says in zoning, but your comment says that seven, maybe you meant five.
You know what, hold on one second, I'll pull it up, yeah. Any construction and or site preparation activities in excess of a hundred decibels shall occur. Only during the following hours, seven A M to seven P M, okay. Sorry, I'm giving.
So yes, we.
To what, till seven?
Yeah, the general bylaw allows.
Section twenty-seven of the general bylaw does say seven P M.
Okay.
We typically do five, and that's what I use, um.
Two one seven.
Sure.
Anybody object to letting it be seven? Brebro, Jim?
Well, I'm cons- with the D Y S facility and the operations, I mean. I don't know where the seven came from, five's fine, okay, I don't, did that come from our? I think it was from a previous comment. Oh, okay. Um, on a draft that I just. Five's fine, um, cause I I know.
And that's just with the loud stuff, other stuff, we can work generally till seven, right?
Yeah, like in- inside the building, I think is no issue, it's it's the.
Yeah, my concern is the loud construction noise.
So we can live with five for the loud stuff.
Let's, let's leave it then.
Okay, number six. So it's not a subdivision, and we're not sure which, uh, if there was a specific subdivision standard. That you wanted to apply for the improvements, you know, I think we should have that discussion. But we're not doing a subdivision, we're not building roadways. I mean, we're building paved areas, obviously, and there's some crossover, obviously with what you wanna see. But to just import that, the entirety of the subdivision standards. Seemed like too much overlap.
And it, this is, it's not a requirement of the zoning bylaw that the. In a development such as this, a project such as this, it's, it's not a requirement of the zoning bylaw that the. Construction standards or the subdivision rules be applied.
There are so many, I mean, we are committed to building exactly what was shown on the plans and what was peer reviewed. I don't, I just don't think you need it, because we're held to a pretty high standard on what we've already shown on the plans. If there was something resembling or a specific item that you wanted to pluck out of subdivision control, we're all ears, but. I don't think you need it.
I think my idea of subdivision control is the town's gonna get those roads or they're gonna function like. Town roads, and we want them to be up to a certain standard. These aren't roads in that sense.
Off the top, I was thinking, I was trying to think. If I could think of anything in the subdivision design and construction standards. That could potentially apply here, and there's little if anything. Yeah, we're not talk, we're not, we're not gonna do street trees here. Uh, we're not doing sidewalks, at least not in the manner specified by the subdivision rules.
Right.
This was really more of a, um, I noticed in previous, you know, I just, I kept it just in case, um.
Yeah, that's something that we would want, if we were gonna do something like this, we would wanna. Think it through and not make this general statement, because making the general statement doesn't really give the applicant a lot of guidance as to, well. What parts of the subdivision rules do I need to follow?
See, I think of like base code and uh, subs- sub, you know. What you do with building a road and, you know, all that, um, shall, shall we leave it out?
I agree with that.
Seven?
So seven, we're fine actually with, Haley and I talked about it, uh, that you had the twenty-four month, we preferred twelve months, regardless. We should be required to, if stuff dies, we should re- re- replant, so yours is fine.
Okay, the twenty-four, the.
Yeah, I mean, we'll quibble with our landscaper's warranties.
The, 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 the first. And we're not having the or.
That's correct.
Okay, moving on, nine?
So nine, the issue that we had with nine was that it was pretty open-ended. So it said, it said, if at any time after their certificate of occupancy is issued for the building or the use, the inspector of building may determine. That additional parking spaces are needed. Very often what I would do is have. Three years, if at any point af- within three years after occupancy. Or if at any point within three years of full, of full occupancy, so full lease up. You wanna do that because people are getting used to the traffic flow, but if ten years from now. Someone says, hey, build a reserve parking, that seems like we're a little further down the road than we need to be. It's not a huge objection, but we kind of wanna kind of set the table here. The idea with these reserved parking. Bylaws and and restrictions are that, hey, see how it goes, build it. Let it flow for a little while. If we need to more parking, we're gonna do it, but having it. Whole new planning board, whole new building commissioner, ten years from now, say, build that, hey, remember that parking, build that now. Just seemed like a ha- pretty heavy.
The, the thing is that um, I I think maybe this was added at some point. You know, the, the bylaw says so many parking spaces. And this was put in to have some flexibility to give a little, uh, but. But, you know, maybe the bylaw was right about the number when time passes. Anyway, that's, that's the way the bylaw works, and who has what thought about it?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is from the bylaw. That language.
If it's open-ended in the bylaw, I mean, look, we can, we can live with it, and my guess is people will just forget about it, uh, to be honest.
I don't remember the last time we asked. We, the town did anything about asking for. The, the reserved to be built out.
The other thing I had there, and I'll just leave it up, up to you, is it says. Such a finding in the planning board may require that all or a portion, I guess a simple request on my part would be. May, and it doesn't have to be a hearing, but may after, after a meeting with the applicant. At least give us some opportunity to have some dialogue rather than getting a letter in the mail saying, by the way, build those parking spaces.
Any objection to doing that?
No.
I think. That should be no practice anyway in my mind, so that's fine.
Okay.
So in the time limit, we, we're not.
Leave, leave the time limit, if if they, they, they wanna leave the time limit in, I mean.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with that, just because it's the way it is in the bylaw, but.
It's fine. My guess is it'll be out of sight, out of mind, as it normally is. Right, so ten, there is an al- alternative, um, this was a significant discussion. Is my understanding on getting with respect to that intersection, we are absolutely committed to um. Doing some crosswalks and funding some stuff over there, but getting, granting the easement and making that otherwise.
That, that should have been.
So it should be just the or language there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it's the or language.
So we know what we need to do there?
Okay.
Moving on. Um, eleven?
I didn't, I mean, it's flagged, but there's no real comment attached to it. Did we have an issue with eleven?
Um, I highlighted this. Because um, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with that. That's something that we'll need to do for the site, the sightlines. Which is also in conjunction with the con-con permit, but I just, I feel more comfortable with it being explicitly stated.
Really just kind of like an O and M thing that we're gonna?
Yeah, just a call out, because that, that was talked about at, at length with the.
Oh, yeah, so we had no problem with this. I think before, didn't it say prior to commencement of construction?
I think that was.
I mean, but comment like, um, maybe after construction and we see what the final condition looks like, then we come up with the plan. So just adding the word occupancy permit instead of.
I think I, yeah, sorry, I'm not, I'm not, that sounds right. I can pull up the, yeah, that, that sounds right, but in any event, yeah, I think it should be called out, um.
Okay, we're okay on that?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the issue with twelve was mostly twelve C?
Yes, that's correct, just cause we can't control that.
Yeah, it, we can't, we can't mandate that a tenant give fair subsidies. To, I mean, we can encourage, we're, we're okay if we say the applicant shall encourage fair subsidies. Um, and things like that, but I, I'm not sure legally I could tell someone that they have to subsidize their employees.
I wanna say we touched on that at the last meeting too.
So we have no issue if you wanna say the applicant shall encourage there.
This does say or E V parking and preferential parking on C is.
We'll encourage all of it, I mean.
We have E V parking spaces on the plan, yeah, yeah.
There's another condition that says we have to do a certain number of them, like twenty, I think, of E V spaces.
That sounds right, ten per building, I believe, or I, I can't remember what the plans say, but.
Yeah, it's Josh, it's ten per building, um, and then also on this condition, I think we wanted to remove the word secure. We're providing bicycle parking. As is shown on the plans, uh, in proximity to the building entrances. But secure might imply they're U ballards, it's the standard stuff that we have right at, right next door to you over at the um. Over at the high school, um, so we are providing bicycle parking, but secure could imply that it's, you know, covered or in the building and. Um, so I think we could get rid of the word secure, and then as, as Haley was stating, there's um, ten E V parking. Spaces shown in proximity to the uh, the entrances, the two entrances on each of the buildings, so.
So we had a word that wanted to come out, and then.
Secure is being removed and C is being removed.
And just as a statement, these are in addition to the things that were already included in our T D M commitments in our transportation study.
I'm sorry, C isn't being removed, we're encour- encouraging fair subsidies, we're not enforcing. That Haley's team.
So now, are we on to D seven?
Yes. Monitor. Yeah, here's an, it was an either or, and um, we are preferring the uh, or.
I'll just say outright for me, I actually like the or in this instance, you know, generally, I would. Not, just because it does impact the traffic in the area generally, but there's so much permitting we're doing in this area. And with the nature of your use, I think the or is appropriate and fine.
Okay, anybody object to going with the or?
No objection here.
All right, let's do that. And that's the bottom of my, uh. Have I missed anything?
Uh, let's bear with me.
Let's circle back for just a moment to the one year. I, I looked up chapter forty-eight, and the language there is. If construction has not yet begun, doesn't say substantial, this is, so if we kind of go with that interpretation, that gives a little bit more leeway. Not that that requires a change in language necessarily, but just more how we apply it or how we think of it.
I'm worried about.
You know what, you know what, maybe would be a, an easier way to solve this rather than trying to work around. Us bylaw language, is if we could add at the end of the, that paragraph, extensions. May, maybe provided upon good cause or. I mean, it's, it's superfluous in any way, but.
That's, that's, that's basically our usual practice to begin with.
Okay. So I don't wanna worry. Do you have to decide something or give her something, or?
As we had, you have anything else, Fiona?
Um, so can you just repeat, I'm sorry, I was, can?
I think we've, I think we've satisfied ourselves that we don't need to do any more language wordsmithing with the, uh, one year.
He just had a bit of.
A suggestion for the one-year requirement, can you, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that for me?
His e- extensions, um, shall be provided upon showing of good cause. Which is superfluous anyway, cause we'd have to have good cause.
May- maybe, maybe provided upon showing of good cause, rather than shall, be careful of shall.
I, I believe me, in this decision, I, I wanted to change a few shals to mays, but I'll keep those to myself, so.
Okay, um, let me just do a quick scan, uh, I think all of the exhibits are up to date, so that's not a problem. Um. I think everybody had a chance to review this beforehand, so I'm really not gonna, um, do this to any, everyone at ten thirty, um. This is just, this was Brian, uh, the assistant town engineer's prior comment, um, there's no signal plan.
I think last, the last sentence could probably be, be deleted there, right? There's no action needed on this one. That's just stating facts.
Um, just in, yeah, uh, I included that just in case the board wanted to make a motion to recognize um, Brian Circo's comment and essentially like confirm that they're moving forward.
I.
But we can just remove.
I think I agree with his mention that the last sentence can be removed because we already kind of in our discussion came to the traffic mitigation type decisions as of, it seems like, we haven't formally voted.
Okay. Okay. Okay, this is getting removed, so just ignore, um, because it's talking about the payment, um. Yeah, we don't need any of that, um, I don't believe. Okay.
All right. So I move that we find favorably on all findings, we, and we, there's no waivers, I believe.
We, we, we close the hearing?
We already closed the hearing.
We already did.
We did.
We did.
And you don't wanna wait until this is all.
Yeah, I mean. I just wanna just confirm.
I have some language I have to get to Fiona, but I mean, pretty straightforward.
I think we need to, uh.
So just as an administrative matter on the eighth perhaps?
Sure, but that's our next meeting, sure.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I don't, we can do that instead, yes. I withdraw my started of a motion.
Well, I would say make the motion subject to the final, just so we can get it, just so subject to the final a- approval of the final language on the eighth.
I don't understa-
Just that way we know we've, we've got the.
The final draft, basically.
So we have the direction to.
But we don't have the draft, we have discussion of what the draft is.
Right, and I'll make the edits.
Yeah, so I don't know what we're gonna do tonight, cause we don't have the draft.
Approve it subject to the making of the final edits, it's fine.
I, I.
It, 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 it's how you like to do business, it's fine.
Okay, but let, let's, unless someone objects.
I think it's, it's sufficient to my mind that we basically agreed on what the decision is going to look like, subject to the exact wordsmithing. And that we're likely, it, it seems like a virtual certainty that we are going to find favorably in all the findings. That we are gonna grant the requested waivers and approve the decision with all the conditions.
Yeah, agreed.
But, but with all of the wordsmithing I, I, I prefer that, it seems to me better that it gets all, all
Yeah.
Done. Go by you, oh, we could, you know.
Fine.
Some little thing, uh, you're gonna have four weeks to do that.
No problem.
Okay, so.
Good.
I think we're done with this.
Coming back, right?
Just for kind of, it should be a, a, a quick evening, is there any way, just a favor, if we can maybe be towards the front of the agenda?
Typically.
Speed, speed, speed.
I think that's fair.
How much of a friend are you with, with, uh?
Hopefully we will.
Cause I think we, I don't think it'll last too long.
My one point on that is typically, hearings closed, we can put the, our approval rate at the start of our action item right after public input phase, and which usually you get nothing.
That's right, that's right, it doesn't have to be
Right.
At seven thirty, depending on how many other, uh, discussion.
When we have closed hearings and decisions to be approved, those typically show up at the top of the agenda.
Yep.
Great.
Natalia, did you wanna add something quickly?
No, I was just gonna stay, say the same thing, once we close the hearing, it becomes an action item which is at the top of the agenda.
That's what he just said.
And there was, there was no obligation of you as the applicant to attend.
Oh, no, we love coming in.
More than welcome to, just wanted to be clear.
I don't get out much these days, Justin, so.
Okay, you, you get paid for coming to these things, right?
What's that?
You get paid for coming to these things.
Not enough.
Put it that way, it's pennies.
But you're coming in a beautiful craft. You can take it.
Listen to all our hearings beforehand, so fun.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate all, all the help and thank you for extending tonight, so we could wrap this up.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, this is present for everybody to get a lot of this, with everything piled up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Busy few weeks, last couple of weeks.
All right, Fiona, I owe you a little language and I'll, I'll get that to you.
Great, and you have my contact information?
I do.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Uh, report from planning board representatives on town committees and CMR PC, anybody?
My only comment is if anyone has happened to be watching this meeting at this late, is that the deadline for CPC proposals is February first, so that should get into the CPC admin by February first, if there's a CPC proposal for spring town meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Do, do we actually vote on a continuance, do we need to do that?
Hearing's closed, we do not need to.
You're good.
Okay.
Yeah, planning board can have anything for CPC.
Is, I, have I missed anything, is there anything else that can lawfully come before us?
How about a motion to adjourn?
That can likely come before us. Did I hear a second on that?
You did, Mr. Davidson.
It's not debatable.
All right, Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
This, I vote aye, Mr. Vecadramen.
Aye.
Mr. Davidson?
Aye.
And Mr. Hassenger.
Aye, motion is unanimous. We are adjourned.